Have you met, I don't know if you have.
That's great.
Hi, how are you doing? Good to see you.
You can have that.
Okay, we're ready to go. Thank you everyone for coming to the city council meeting of Spanish Fork City. Today, February 4th, 2025. Thank you for everyone joining us in the council chambers and online as well. Wherever you're at in the world, we appreciate, well, look at the Carden family right here in front too. All right, how's it going guys? Thank you for joining us. We're gonna get our meeting started the same way we always do in Spanish Fork, with a motivational thought and prayer by Councilman Carden. And then Councilman Took will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Carden.
All right, I'll go ahead and say a prayer for us. Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to gather together this evening to gather to talk about the different affairs here in the city. We are thankful, Father, to have so many gathered here together to talk about things that have happened and to celebrate those things of heroics and also to discuss potential things here in the city. We ask thee, Father, for a blessing upon the discussions this evening, that we can have good conversations and debates and to come to the best conclusions. We ask thee, Father, to please bless those that reside within our city, that they will be safe and protected. And please bless our servicemen and women that are out on the roads to keep us safe. Please bless them with safety and protection as they go about their duties. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. That sounds so much better with a packed room full of people, doesn't it? Makes a difference. Very good. Appreciate it. We'll go to a follow-up on comments. I don't see City Manager Seth Perrins here. Tyler, will you, will you take care of that before we go to recognitions?
Yeah, you bet. I don't think we had anything on the agenda for today besides Dell's. Yeah, Dell, do you have an update on the comments we got from Matt Barton at the last council meeting about the trail system?
Yeah, the only thing I have, we've had several conversations with Matt via email. And I know my Park staff is set up to meet with him actually Thursday this week to talk through some of those issues. So that's as far as we've gotten, but we are in contact with him and we'll meet with him day after tomorrow.
Okay, thanks for starting down that path.
Yep.
Thank you Tyler, thank you Dale, appreciate it. Moves us on to the next item on our agenda, some recognitions tonight. We're excited to have some folks in the audience tonight to discuss an incident that happened just a few weeks ago in our town. And we are certainly excited and honored to have our Lieutenant Governor in the audience today as well to help honor these people. We'll pass it over to Chief Eddie Hales to let us know about these life-saving awards here in our city.
Thanks Mayor, this is an awesome night to be able to recognize two heroes in our community. If I could have Stefania and Preston come up here. This is for these two.
Yeah, you can give them around.
I also want to welcome their families and friends, Preston and Stephanie as well. Stefania is also a member of the Unified Fire Authority and there's a large contingency of their folks here as well to support her. So welcome Unified Fire Authority for being here as well. On January 10th, it was a cold night. If you remember that night, I don't know if many of you do, but I remember it that night. And some of our staff back here remember that night, and especially these two. It was cold and it was just starting to snow and it was getting slick. And these two were out and about with their families and traveling through the city. And they happened to come upon a car accident where a gentleman came off of Arrowhead Trail, rolled his vehicle down the embankment and landed upside down submerged in the Spanish Fork River. He was trapped inside the water, inside the vehicle. And Stefania and Preston stopped what they were doing, went into action as any citizen would, knowing that somebody else's life is in peril. And they ran down there and found that the person inside the vehicle was still inside. So they jumped in and went to work trying to get him out. They started banging on windows, kicking, trying to get this gentleman out and then saw him come, his head come out of the water a little bit and they were able to pull him out to safety. Freezing cold water. I don't know if you've ever cold plunged at this time of year. I last about 30 seconds, if that. And this was a total cold plunge that Preston and Stefania did. And I don't think, maybe they even felt it, because they stay in the water a really long time, minutes. And were able to rescue this man's life. So if you want to know what these two experienced on January 10th, get in a cold plunge and try to last two to three minutes. And try to think through your head what these two heroes did in that moment. These two are true heroes. They put their lives above their own to save another man's life. And that is the definition of hero. They didn't think about the danger, they just saw someone in need and they went to action. So it's an honor tonight to recognize these two for their life-saving heroics with a life-saving award from the Spanish Fork Fire EMS Department and Spanish Fork City. They showed us what it means to be courageous and selfless. And this is what the world needs more of, is Preston's and Stefania's. So thank you for doing what you did. Thank you for being heroes. I know that this gentleman that you saved, he's thankful for you too. I wish he could be here tonight. But what you did was something we will never forget. We want you to be recognized for that. Tonight we have a recognition of a life-saving award here on a plaque that they can hang on their wall or in an office for Preston. And then an award for Stefania as well. Also like to give them a challenge coin from our department that they can carry with them. And it's recognition and another thank you from us, as well as something they can frame and put in a plaque as well for their life-saving award. So thank you again. And I think the mayor probably wants to have you share a little bit of your heroic story. So I'll turn the time over to you guys if you want to.
I don't know. Thankful she was there, sorry. It's funny that you took my, I've been telling everybody at work, I was just doing a cold blood challenge. Sorry I'm emotional, but my dad was going through liver cancer and actually died a day and a half later. So just, I think this happened at the right time for me anyways in our family. Thankfully Stefanie was there, she spoke Spanish, she knew what to do when we got him out, was able to take care of everything. You know, but yeah, I was gonna say the chief took my little ice cold challenge, you know, that I've been telling everybody. But I don't know, just thankful everybody, thanks.
No, I'm just grateful we were there. It was the right time, right place kind of a thing. And I'm glad that he is okay and that he was able to recover. And it was really cool to have you be able to jump in and help me. I wouldn't have done it by myself, right? Like I think, we think about safety too, also protect ourselves and our families. Like I had my kiddos with me in the car, so, but they were great. They were just sitting in the car. But, yeah.
I do tell everybody that we lifted the truck up two feet even though it's only a foot. I don't know if you remember that.
Yeah, no, we did not lift the truck up. It was in the water, leveraged a little to get it up. But it was because it was in water. We're not. Nothing crazy. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Good job you guys.
I think they want to picture right here, but.
Should we hand it over and have the Lieutenant Governor do her part with them and then we'll.
Please, yes.
So I'm Deidra Henderson, I'm Lieutenant Governor and a proud daughter of Spanish Fork. Very proud to live in this town. And you two make me even more proud. I live right there. I live in the neighborhood, right there. And this is not the first time that a serious accident has happened right there. And as soon as I found out about this and I found out about you two, I told my staff, we gotta do something. And I don't have anything nearly as cool as the chief, but I do have, I have some papers here. From the governor and me. I have to say, nobody knows when they'll be called on to do something heroic. Nobody knows when they'll be called on to provide an act of service for their neighbor. But we all have to be prepared for those moments. Because when they call, it's our job to step up and answer. And we are so grateful that there are people like Preston and Stefania who, when called upon, stepped up. I, I visit with lots of people every day who come to the Capitol to visit, to see the seat of government, to find out more about the people's house, find out about how laws are made in the state. And I love to tell them, the very few people actually have a say in what happens in our society. But the people who do are the people who show up. And we show up for each other in lots of different ways. But when we show up in ways like Stefania and Preston did, those are the most powerful ways. So thank you for your example. Thank you for putting others above yourself in those moments. Can only imagine how proud your kids are of both of you. Stefania, for your children, to see their mother plunge into icy water to save someone's life, that's a lesson that can't be taught any other way. It's generational. So on behalf of the Governor, Governor Spencer Cox and myself, we have a certificate of recognition for both of you in honor of your heroic actions in the Spanish Fork River on Friday, January 10th, 2025. And as a citizen of Utah, as Lieutenant Governor of Utah, but especially as a resident of the great city of Spanish Fork, I offer my heartfelt gratitude and congratulations to both of you.
Yep, let's do that. Let's have the three of you up in front of the council.
We'll do the camera here. Ready, one, two, three. Got to get that good sign in the background.
Thank you, thank you guys. Appreciate it so much. Thank you Preston, Stefania and Lieutenant Governor for making, making time tonight. As a mayor and council, if we've talked about this a little bit before this meeting, I concur, Lieutenant Governor, this is, these are the things that make a community what it is. And when you add all those up together in our respective communities, it's what makes our state, the state that it is. And that success is not by accident. So you guys epitomize what it means to be, to be good neighbors. But to definitely, as Chief said, be heroes in our community. People we can look up to, people and examples, not only your kids, but our whole community can certainly look up to and be proud of. So thank you for letting us honor you tonight. I want to give the council a minute to make a comment for anything. Everybody's touched by this in an individual way.
I couldn't pass up this moment. I have the privilege of living two doors down from Preston and Tammy. And this isn't the first time Preston has done something like this. Many of you may or may not know, if you watch the news coverage, a couple of years ago, he saved some Papa John's employees' lives from somebody who was having a mental health episode and was putting their lives in danger. This is who Preston is, this is who Tammy is. And then sat in a funeral for his father a week later, and that's who the Hahn family is. And this is like Lieutenant Governor Henderson said, this is the people that we have in our community that step up when we need to step up, that were there for each other in those hard times. So thank you both for doing that, for being there and stepping up for someone you didn't know that you didn't have to help, but you did because you care for people. Thank you for what you do.
While, while you're all here and while we have the Lieutenant Governor here, and not many of you will, will know this, because as a public servant herself, she does go about her work quietly and effectively, both for the state as a whole, but for your city. She's been a tireless advocate for cities across the state of Utah, but especially the city she lives in. There was definitely some times, a couple of years ago, if many of you that have been here for longer than a few years will remember, we had some, some water years that posed a unique threat to our community. Different areas of the state as well, but our community had some, some, some really concerning spots in our city that not only life, but, but, but private property and public property was, was in danger for the water that you just couldn't control of when it's, when it's gonna come down from the mountains. I can't tell you enough of the coordination and the collaboration that existed between the city and the Lieutenant Governor to be able to elevate those, those risks and those concerns to a state level, to be able to get some, some things done for, for our area that certainly if they were not done, we would have had very, very tough circumstances on our hands as a community. Those are, that's just one of the many examples that, that I can think of, of thanking our Lieutenant Governor for being a good enough citizen to, when these, these neat things happen in our community, she, she wants to reach out and recognize our residents. But she's always got our community in her top of mind as a whole, as a resident of Spanish Fork. And so I'm glad there's so many people here tonight to, for me to read this proclamation for our Lieutenant Governor. As, as, as I know it, and somebody can fact check me if they'd like, but I don't think we've had a Lieutenant Governor from Spanish Fork in the history of Lieutenant Governors of the state of Utah. And so she's, she's our first and definitely living up to the mantle of that for our city. So if you'll indulge me, Lieutenant Governor, I'd like to read this. And since you gave away things that people are gonna hang on their wall very deservingly tonight, we're gonna give you something that maybe you can bump that college diploma off your wall and, and put this instead. But let me read this really quick. It's a Spanish Fork City mayoral proclamation honoring Lieutenant Governor Deidra M. Henderson. Whereas Deidra M. Henderson has been a devoted member of the Spanish Fork community, where she and her husband have raised their family and continue to reside, exemplifying the values and spirit of pride and progress that define our city. Whereas Deidra M. Henderson has dedicated herself to public service, serving as a member of the Utah State Senate for eight years, representing a district that included Spanish Fork, and now as Utah's Lieutenant Governor, demonstrating exceptional leadership and commitment to the people of Utah. Whereas Utah's Chief Election Officer, Deidra Henderson, has worked diligently to ensure fair and transparent elections, helping to maintain and strengthen, strengthen the public's faith in the democratic process. Whereas Lieutenant Governor Deidra Henderson has provided invaluable leadership and support during times of need, positively impacting both Spanish Fork and Utah as a whole, and contributing to the pride we feel as a community. Whereas Spanish Fork City is proud to call Lieutenant Governor Henderson one of our own, recognizing her exemplary service, leadership and dedication to the betterment of our community and state. Now therefore, I, Mike Mendenhall, Mayor of Spanish Fork City, together with the city council, do hereby recognize and honor Lieutenant Governor Deidra M. Henderson for her outstanding service, leadership and commitment to the people of Spanish Fork and the state of Utah dated February 4th, 2025. Thank you Lieutenant Governor, we appreciate your service. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you everybody. I don't know that the city council meeting gets better than that tonight, but you're more than welcome to stay and see if it gets better. But again, we thank so much the families of Stefania and, and Preston. Thank you for your families being here to honor you. You truly are heroes in Spanish Fork and thank you to the Lieutenant Governor in your office being here today too. We appreciate you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. It's a good thing we do the pledge first. Yes, yeah, yeah, it wouldn't have sounded as good if we'd had people exit with the pledge. But yeah, that sounded a lot better with that many voices doing the pledge tonight. We appreciate everybody being here and taking time out of your Tuesday nights to join us in Spanish Fork. We sure, we sure like, the more people the better in our meetings and we appreciate everybody being here. That moves us on to item five. Anything else council before we move to public comments? Item five on our agenda is the public comments section. This is where the public can come up and speak to the mayor and council for anything that is maybe not on the agenda in a public hearing setting. But you're more than welcome to come up and speak to the city council tonight if you'd like. And try to keep, yes, Jack keeps us to three minutes and tries to keep us on time to respect everybody's time. But please, if you'd like to address the mayor and council on any, any topic, come up. This is the public comments section to do so. Going once? Nothing Kathleen, you'll come up in a minute? Okay, alright. Okay. Seeing no public comments, it'll move to council comments. This is where the council gives a report of some of the meetings we've went to and anything going on in the city that we'd like to report on. And we'll start, maybe we'll start with Councilman Euler tonight and go this way and end with Councilman Carden if that's okay. Councilman Euler.
Thank you Mayor. Wanted to start by thanking Kathleen in the Chamber of Commerce. We had the opportunity and I'm sure some others will speak to this, but we had the opportunity to join them and recognize some great businesses within our community that have done some good over the past year. And so just wanted to thank you for that invite. Wanted to thank our city staff. We returned this past weekend. We spent some time together. Wanted to thank our city staff. We returned this past weekend. We spent some time together, kind of stuck in a room for a couple of days as we discuss some of the major projects and needs that the city has that we'll be looking to try and solve and take care of over the next few years. Wanted to personally thank city staff for the time and efforts they put into their presentations. And we live in a great city, and the reason we live in a great city is because of the staff and employees that work hard every day to keep it that way. So grateful for them. I would be remiss, I guess is the word, if I didn't take an opportunity at this point to congratulate our Spanish Fork High School Wrestling Team. And at both Maple Mountain and Spanish Fork, we've got quite a few wrestlers that are going to be competing in the state tournament this upcoming week, week from today and tomorrow. Over at UVU, want to wish them well as they try to defend their state title as wrestling champion. So good luck to the wrestlers. That's all I've got.
When's that coming up? That's coming, it's over at UVU?
UVU, a week from today. So two days. It'll be Tuesday and Wednesday, the 11th and 12th of next week. So good luck.
Tell you what, I was there last year and with Councilman Euler watching a few meets. Holy cow, does Spanish Fork show up to that. We commandeered a whole section of UVU to watch our wrestlers, right?
Yep, yep. Quite a few, quite a few young men that have worked very, very hard to get there. Not just, not just the ones that are competing, but the entire team. We have a great wrestling team, and they are great because of the coaches that push them hard and get them there, help them prepare, so.
My wrestling career ended in third grade, but I can tell you, I watched the whole day of matches there. So pretty entertaining. Even if you're not a fan of, you know, if you weren't a wrestler, go support the Dons and the Golden Eagles. It's a fun sport to watch, for sure. Councilwoman Beck.
A thank you as well, like Kevin said, to the Chamber of Commerce and to staff. The 20-plus hours of our meetings, I think really pays off, so thank you. Yesterday, our Fiesta Days website went live, and so I've asked Jack to share this year's logo. Its theme is igniting traditions, sparking memories. So we're super excited. Things are coming together well. I just want to say again, if you want to apply to be a food vendor, a craft vendor, in the grand parade, any volunteer opportunities, everything should be online now, right Dell? I know there were a couple little kinks right there in the beginning, so I think they're all worked out. So that's up and going. I also wanted to announce tonight, our grand marshals will be Richard and Tamara Davis. Richard was a council member, I think, 10-plus years ago, for eight years. And they both have done so much in the city. We just wanted to shine a light on their accomplishments that they have done together. And then our Pioneer Spirit Award recipient will be Tom Hodgson. He used to work at the Utah County Sheriff's Department, and he is the one that started Shop With A Cop. So he's an amazing man. That was a unanimous vote from our executive committee to recognize him and his accomplishments. So I think that's all for Fiesta Days. One other thing, last week, several of us were able to go to Spanish Fork Junior High and talk with the eighth graders. We did about two classes each and just talked to them about local government. And one really cool thing, since we're in the library hall building, I asked by a raise of hands, I think there were three classes there, and I said, who's been to the new library? And I want to say 80% of those kids had been down here. So that was really cool, and they had some great questions. Sometimes we really recognize when they're parenting, they're parroting their parents, when they're asking, why so many roundabouts? Why so many chicken spots? I'm like, oh, go home and talk to your mom and dad. So, but they were so much fun. Good, good, smart kids that will eventually be sitting up here, leading the community. So that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Councilwoman Beck. Councilman Marshall?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, donuts.
Yeah, that wasn't a phone call though. That was, yeah, something else. But yes, donuts.
Whatever.
I think you're right.
I believe so.
Oh, welcome Seth. When did you arrive?
Again, thanks to the staff for the last three days last week. They were by far the most prepared that we've ever been. I think the conversation was the best we've had since I've been on the Council. You weren't afraid to really dive into the issues and push back on us a bit. We were not afraid to push back on you a bit, and it was really good dialogue, and I appreciated it a lot. And so thank you for that. My wrestling career lasted five days. So at least you got the third day. I didn't even make it a week. That has to be the hardest sport ever, and I wish, I hope that I'm around, because that is a fun time over at UVU. Back in my previous life, I used to take pictures at a sporting event, and I had a press pass to go to the wrestling state tournament. And there is not a worse sport to photograph than wrestling, but it's a fun sport to watch. I could feel myself just like leaning into every move that the kids were making. It's a pretty fun time. So get out, go support Spanish Fork, Maple Mountain. Sports are a huge part of our community, and they're keeping our kids active and having something to do and a good outlet and learning good teamwork. You know one thing we've never had, we never really talked about, was the state tournament football over in the fall. We, Spanish Fork, played their butts out all season long and came up just a bit short. But I think at some point, we need to recognize the effort that it took to get to that point. We hadn't been there before as a community. They worked dang hard. They would have been here except for one fumble, or, you know, one tackle, or one thing. But very proud of them, very proud of being from Spanish Fork. So love the team atmosphere that when the community comes together for those events, it really makes a difference. So that's about all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Marshall. Councilman Took?
Thank you, Mayor. And Shane, I agree, that football game was incredible. If you watched that online, it was absolutely outstanding. We came so close to a state title. So we'll have another opportunity, I just know it. But I do have a couple of things this evening to share. I'd like to start, though, by giving some time to our Chamber of Commerce President and CEO Kathleen.
Thank you so much, everyone. I saw the security detail when I walked in before I saw the Lieutenant Governor. I thought, what is going on this evening? But no, I just wanted to thank you all for your presence at the gala this past week. It was wonderful being able to really highlight the support that we have from the city. Your presence makes it very extra special for us. So thank you so much for being there. As I said that night, that's my favorite event because I get to recognize the really amazing people that we have in our business community. I wish we had more awards sometimes, but it makes it extra special for those that do receive them. So upcoming events, we have, you learned about our ambassador program a little bit that night, which we're super excited about. Our ambassadors are getting to work this year. Something they really wanted to do was create more opportunities for relationship building within the chamber. We network often, but we have a monthly luncheon and not a regular cadence of meetings in between. So they started a weekly luncheon. So it's every Wednesday at Slim Chickens. It's open networking, so everyone gets a chance to speak and everyone will listen. We listen and we don't judge. We'll have like an open format for networking for our businesses every single week. So that's ran by our ambassadorship program, and that will be Wednesdays at Slim Chickens. Then we have our new networking luncheon, which is much larger, but super fun. That will be on February 20th, hosted at the Hampton Inn. And a reminder, the next Bills and Bagels meeting is on March 1st. So, and that's at 7:30 in the morning at the Nible School District Boardroom. That's the main things we've got going on in February. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you Kathleen. With the Chamber of Commerce, I love the new ambassador program, what's happening, so many exciting things. This chamber event that we attended, and we had full representation from the Council, and that was exciting, as you can see. And just, we had the Spanish Fork royalty there, and Salem, and their city council from Spanish Fork, or from Salem, and it was just, it's just growing and it's exciting, and they could feel the energy and I-
Is that floor uneven? It certainly is, right? Like, that's not, that's not our actual heights, going that way.
I'm lobby center.
I'm not getting my picture taken again.
You can start wearing heels.
Apparently, dang. Who's the short time man?
Just a couple more things from me. I think there's a couple photos I'd like to share for this next one. This is my first opportunity. Last year, the weather was crazy. I couldn't make it up to Salt Lake. We had the Local Officials Day, the Legislature, and I was able to, my daughter serves on Spanish Fork Youth City Council, and so we were able to kind of go through this day together. And it was just so exciting, learning from our state leaders, like our Lieutenant Governor and others. And a couple of pictures here that just kind of showcase some of the amazing things we, people we were able to network with and associate with and just learn from that day. And I'm excited for this moving forward. Anything that the ULCT does is wonderful, and just to educate and inform us, we can be a better city. And so anyway, thank you to all those who participated in that. And moving on, just a couple last thoughts here. As Councilwoman Beck mentioned, we were able to go this past week and teach the eighth graders at the junior high school. I love this opportunity, talking with the youth, the next generation. At the end of my presentations, I would ask the students, you know, what changes you'd like to see in Spanish Fork? What would you do? What do you need help with? Those kind of questions. And the reoccurring questions that came up every time was, pretty funny, they said, we need microwaves throughout the school, and we need vending machines that will give us something when we put our money in. So I said I'd do my best to work on those things for them. But they were just wonderful, great questions and wonderful ideas. I always write down the ideas that they share, because you just never know. They have some amazing ideas, we'll see. I just, again, echo what's been said already about the amazing retreat that we had with our city leadership and staff. I just want to thank our staff for their time and dedication, the directors as well, you know, in that mix. It's a big investment, and they are very passionate about what they do to make and keep Spanish Fork great. And so we're very lucky, and it's showcased in something like this. And so that was fun for me to see, see that amazing production. And then lastly, we had a Parks and Recreation Committee meeting last night, monthly meeting, under the direction of Dell Robinson, who does an amazing job. We have an incredible committee. So just in case you're wondering who's coming up with these ideas and supporting these ideas, things that are happening when it comes to Parks and Recreation in our city, we are, we have, we're in a great leadership. And we have an incredible committee who make these amazing decisions. So it was fun to talk with them and discuss the important things that are happening and that will be coming with Spanish Fork, including our amazing rec center that will be here before we know it. And with that, Mayor, that's all I've got.
Perfect. Thank you. Councilman Took? Councilman Cardon?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things. First, I'll lead off with what we've already talked about with the city, with the meetings that we had this last week. Please make sure that your teams know how thankful we are for, one, helping you prepare for those meetings, because we know it's not just the department heads. It takes the whole departments to make that happen. Thank you for spending the three days with us, and I think it's been covered really well. It was a great meeting. Second is, one of the committees I get to serve on is the Rotary Committee. They are getting ready to start working on the scholarship golf tournament with the Chamber. So if that's something you've participated in the past, please start looking out for that. Another thing that I think is worth touting is our Rotary helps sponsor and carry out an Armenian, if I said that right, water project that was over, I think, $250,000 of money that they had to get through the Rotary Association for this little town that, long story short, the people in the town would have to go to Russia, or the men would have to go to Russia to work for their families because they couldn't farm the grounds that were there, because the water was downhill or on the other side of a mountain. I'm not exactly sure, but in order to get the water there, they needed $250,000. And so our Rotary here in Spanish Fork headed that up and has been able to do that in under a year's time, which is pretty remarkable. So if you know the Rotarians, or if you're looking for a way to serve, Rotary is a great way to give back. Jack, I'll leave it to you. Whatever you bring up first, I'll go with next. Let you drive. I have a few pictures here. Okay, first, so MAG, the Mountain Land Association of Governers?
Governors?
Government?
Government.
MAG, they support our Mills on Wheels program here in the county. And they, here in Spanish Fork, we currently have two days that are not covered, and they've had a struggle getting those days. And those days are Tuesday and Friday. And so what you do is you get to deliver six to 10 meals to usually homebound individuals that are a little bit older. And you get to do it at your, kind of at your leisure. You can drive your own car, you can take your kids with you, because you're just running the food into these individuals, and they get to stay there. It's a great option. One of my neighbors had sent this to me, just for stay-at-home moms, or those that just have some extra time during those hours. But again, Tuesdays and Fridays are the days they're looking for here in Spanish Fork. But if there's another day that you're interested in, they're always looking for volunteers, and they can use that help. And again, these are individuals in our community that can use that help. So please, if you can, the information is here or on the MAG website. Please check that out if you have that opportunity or that time in your day. Next is, so kind of echoing what Landon was talking about with our Local Officials Day with our U City Council, it was a great day to just get to hear, again, from our Lieutenant Governor, who is just here with us, but also our representatives. Jeff Burton was there, Stephen White, and Mike McKell were all there as they're in the midst of the legislative session. A great, our U City Council, they show up and they show up big time, and I talk about them all the time, and I will continue to. They do a lot of service, they do a lot of things. They love this day because they get to learn a little bit more about how the processes happen, happening on the hill, or some would say how the sausage is made, which may can be a good thing or a bad thing, depending on how you look at politics. But they all come away grateful for the state that they live in, and specifically the area that we live in. And the next, so this was just, you know, some interactions that were happening there. Our Lieutenant Governor and our representatives all took a lot of time to be with them. Then last night, Stephen White held a family night at the Capitol. What a cool opportunity. So I don't know how many of us reside in Stephen White's district. I do. And we were able to go up, and he let us go into some of those rooms that, you know, sometimes you don't get the opportunity to be in, and teach a lot about them, about the process that's happening. And this is a picture of everybody that was there. Stephen provided pizza, and that's probably what got my kids there. That, and maybe some bribery from their parents. And it was such an awesome time. We are in the midst of the legislative session. According to ChatGPT, there's 31 days left of this session. There's a lot of bills happening. Seth, do you remember how many are currently have, like over 500, I believe? So a lot of bills are happening. Please pay attention and let your voice be heard. Let our representatives know. Stephen White, Jeff Burton, and Mike McKell, again, represent our area. Let them know your opinions on things. Let them know what you're feeling about different things that are happening. It's an important part of that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Cardon. Appreciate it. These council members have done great work over the last couple of weeks, but dedicate a lot of time and energy away from their day jobs and families as well to their committee meetings. And so a lot of what I would say would be repeating what they've said, so I won't say it, except thank you Kathleen. The Chamber Gala was awesome, those business owners from Spanish Fork and Salem. They make a go of it every day, are fun to interact with and really energizing to be with. Yeah, the MAG, Meals on Wheels, people ask, elected people locally all the time, how can I help? I want to help. I'll tell you what, it's a pretty great place to help if you got just a few minutes on a day like that. Jagger, my little eight-year-old, still asks to drive by Mary Lou's house all the time on the north end of town, because he wants to remember Mary Lou's house and check and make sure her car's there and just check on her, because that's who they used to deliver. Meals on Wheels too, when Amber was home with a little kid. So if you want to make some memories for your kids about service, I would certainly take MAG up on it. It's not a hard gig, and you'll get to meet some great folks in our community too. If Jack will indulge me, I tried to send you, that's why I got in trouble with donuts and the noise on my phone, Shane. It wasn't somebody calling. But I had the chance this last week to spend some time with our Congressman, Burgess Owens. Asked for an introduction to a spot in our community that I think most of you are familiar with, but if you're not, just take a quick 55 seconds and see this video that he sent to me earlier this week. Turn it louder on your phone.
Yeah, where's the good music?
Turn it up. There you go. There you go. There you go. There you go. Congressman Owens has, had heard about Gateway Parks up at the golf course. Um, I don't know where he heard about it, but he wanted to see it and, and reached out and said, Mayor, can you show me what's going on up here? Uh, he heard that it was a good public-private partnership, uh, up there on the golf course, which it certainly is. You have a private company that has made snow. I don't know if anybody's noticed, it's been a little warm this winter. We don't have a lot of snow. If you were going to try to sled up at the golf course, you wouldn't be able to for maybe one day this year. But Gateway, Ryan Neptune and, and his wife, uh, and Reno Mahay is included there as one of the partners of that business. Which by the way, he's watching the Super Bowl pretty closely this week. We made fun of him about that. He was, uh, he's an Eagle that, uh, lost a Super Bowl and, and Burgess has won a Super Bowl. So they went back and forth. It was pretty good. Uh, but, uh, just again, highlight the, the innovative, uh, uh, opportunity that's up there. Uh, that's going to, to end, I think Dale, at the end of February, first week in March, maybe is when they're running till. So you only have a few weeks left of Gateway. They are making snow, so it's not relying on, on just the weather. Uh, but, uh, the other part that Congressman Owens wanted to see is the opportunity that Gateway gives to kids to learn how to ski or snowboard for free up there. They don't pay anything to do that. That's why their, their business is called The Gateway, because it's a gateway for kids to get introduced to winter sports. And some of those kids certainly don't have the ability to, to maybe get into what's, what's deemed a pretty expensive sport. So doing good work up there. Uh, Congressman Owens wanted to see it. He wasn't going to go down the tubing hill until he was shamed into going down the tubing hill. Every, everybody made it. It was a great time. If you're looking for something to do with your, your family for the next couple of weeks, they're still open and go up there and, and, and check it out. Uh, but a great partnership with the city that, uh, they've been for a couple of years now and, and we hope so in the future. So thanks to Congressman Owens coming and, and checking that out with us as well. Okay, that's all I have for council reports. Anything else come up while I was pontificating? Council members that you want to share? Okay, if not, it moves to staff reports, city manager parents, anything that you want to report from a staff perspective before we go to 101?
Uh, none today, Mayor.
Okay, perfect. That takes us, uh, to 8A, the Main Street Project Open House. I think this is, whoa, who's this guy? Who's this guy coming up here? Before, uh, before Chris begins, uh, if you, you guys know, uh, our, our former city engineer, Chris Thompson. We're excited to welcome back, uh, him. He works for a company that's helping us out on the, uh, on the Main Street Project. But before I forget, Chris, I just wanted to start off with reading this whole book of, uh, of, uh, yeah, Spanish Fork, Revised Ordinances of Spanish Fork City dated 1931. A client, uh, of mine presented this to me and said, I think you'd, you'd find this interesting. And there are a lot of interesting things in here. You can see I've, I've tagged them. I'm not going to read them all, but for, for what Chris is going to talk about, I am going to read section 628. This is 1931 in Spanish Fork, okay? So remember, that's a few years back. The congested district in Spanish Fork. For the purpose of this ordinance, the following streets and portion of streets in Spanish Fork City shall be known and hereby designated congested districts. Main Street from First South Street to Fourth North Street. So since 1931, I'm not sure what vehicles we were driving 1931. But even since then, Spanish Fork's Main Street from First South to Fourth North has been congested. So I'm sure that was a public debate, uh, back then about what to do. It's going to continue to today about how to improve Main Street. We'll never stop trying to improve Main Street and the flow of, of such. I don't think that's 1931. Uh, but, uh, but anyway, just, just keep that in mind as we're discussing some of the changes that we're, we're talking about on Spanish Fork's Main Street. It's not the first time we're, we're doing this. Uh, it's, uh, it's a problem and an issue and we're trying to continually improve on it, just like decades before us. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, we've gotten a little bit more congestion since 1931 on Main Street.
Still Salem's fault, though.
That's right. So it's, uh, it's, uh, a, a, a wonderful Main Street. And the city council has been really proactive, uh, looking at Main Street and what the options are. About 12 years ago, uh, a bunch of, uh, planners and architects from across the country came and, and spent some time on Main Street. Looking at different options that, that could be done to improve the look, the feel, the safety, uh, the, the ability for businesses to thrive on Main Street and, and to have it be a vibrant part of our community. After that, a, a grant was obtained to, uh, do some master planning on Main Street and, and, and lay out, uh, uh, some, some options for, for making those improvements that were recommended by this group. And then after that, a, a grant from the Mountain Lands Association of Governments and some funding from UDOT has come together to do the first phase of Main Street, which was from 600 North to 10th North. Uh, that has been, uh, looked at and, and, and that is progressing. And then another grant has come, uh, to do two more blocks south. But this grant is a little bit different in, in that it can cover the cost of two more blocks. So from Fourth North to Sixth North. Uh, but it could also be used as a match for a much larger federal grant that could do all of Main Street, uh, down to Third South. And so, uh, the, the ability to, to continue all the way down is, is still dependent on some, some grant, uh, applications, some of which often are awarded the second or third time applied. And so anyway, a lot going on on Main Street, a lot of funding opportunities coming. And with that, there are a bunch of concepts that have been, uh, worked up for options on Main Street that, that could be done to, to make it safer, to help with the congestion, to make it a more beautiful place and to, uh, uh, make sure that the businesses along there thrive and, and that pedestrians are, are, are safe. And, and, and so, uh, with those concepts, there will be, uh, a couple of open houses, uh, coming up on February 19th, one in the morning for businesses. And then there will be a public open house, uh, that evening, uh, from five o'clock to seven o'clock here in the Spanish Fork Library. And we would just like to make sure that all the public knows they're invited to come to look at some of the concepts, to talk through some of the, the, the issues that are on Main Street. There are a lot of accidents on Main Street. And so, uh, a lot of the concepts are, are centered on helping make it, making the, the Main Street safer. Uh, also helping to get traffic through in, in a more orderly manner and, and, uh, with a little less congestion, but at the same time preserving the look and feel of Main Street, uh, and, and making it vibrant for, for the businesses to succeed there. So anyway, like to just make sure everyone that public knows, five o'clock, seven o'clock here at the library. Come and, and, and look at these concepts, make your voices heard and, 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 uh, we'll take those concepts and, and, and your, uh, input and, uh, put together a, a good plan.
Perfect. Thank you, Chris. Right here over at the Heritage Room, just next door, right?
And could I add, there's that website too, that's at the bottom of the flyer there. And residents can learn more here about some of the history and context for these meetings. And they can receive email updates. The website's at the bottom of that flyer. We'll also be posting it on social media. It's not super easy to remember, but it's u dot input dot utah dot gov slash Spanish, Spanish Fork Maine.
Sounds like a government website.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris about this?
Excited to see you.
Thanks, Chris.
Hope to see everybody there. We'll, uh, we're going to try to be there as, uh, as, uh, council. If we're all there together, great. If not, we'll be there, uh, separately. But, uh, happy to hear and, and see some renderings and, and get everyone's input on, uh, on the next phases of, of Main Street. Okay, takes us to item B, Spanish Fork 101, Mr. Dale Robinson, Recreation Center Branding. Unless you, in case anybody lives under a rock and doesn't know where we have a rec center, getting close to done, Dale. Tell us what's going on.
Yeah, we're, we're excited. Tonight, um, uh, we're going to look at some branding ideas, but I want you to, to remember back in, uh, last September, we used a council work session, uh, to take a tour of the facility. And during, or, or throughout that process, we talked about what this facility might be named. And, um, shortly after that process, we, we began the, the process of working to, uh, find a logo. We started working with a design firm to find a logo that fit the name, but also fit the, uh, branding of the city. So we're excited tonight to unveil the outcome of months of work, uh, hundreds of ideas, uh, lots of rough drafts. And so what, what I want to present to you tonight, and we'll have Jack start the video and show you what we've come up with. In Spanish Fork, we take pride in our vibrant community and our commitment to progress. We dreamed of a space that could bring together wellness, recreation and community. A space where every generation could find something to love and a place to belong. We asked ourselves, what name could encompass all of this? What could represent aquatics, fitness, mental health, the arts and social connection? What could embody our city's commitment to pride and progress? The answer became clear. The Spanish Fork Fit City Center. The name that was born with our Health and Wellness Initiative celebrates everything we are and everything we strive to be. The new logo features an intertwined F and C, representing Fit City. A place where health, wellness and growth flourish. The design reflects the nurturing of mind and body, the energy of sports, the flow of creativity and connection, and the natural beauty of the river that runs alongside our center. The Spanish Fork Fit City Center isn't just a building. It's a hub for every aspect of community life. Located along the River Trail at the sports park, it's where we come together as individuals and families to move, grow and connect. The Fit City Center, like recreation, wellness and leisure is for everyone. It's for the memories we create and the moments we share. Come and grow with us this fall at the Spanish Fork Fit City Center. Okay.
Oh, I forgot to take off my thing.
I don't know about the voiceover, but the rest of it was amazing.
Well, thanks Shane. You knew who that was?
Sounded familiar.
Well, I guess they were hard up, couldn't find anybody. I was cheap.
There you go.
So let me run through just a couple more slides and talk through our style guide, uh, with you, just to, to share with you, uh, what we've, what we've come up with. And by the way, Rushford Lee with Red Core Brands is the company that we use to do this. They're the, they're the same company the city worked with when we went through our rebrand, rebranding process a while back. So, um, let's, I guess I have a clicker, don't I? Does it work or do you want to just, do you want to just flip those? Whoa. So here, here's our logo. You can see it with several different wording options there. Where you use Spanish Fork in different, a variety of ways with Fit City or without it and just Fit City Center. The primary couple of colors are the ones you just saw. There are the three on the top there. We've also got on our palette, uh, some other colors that it can go with. So it shows you a few of the variety of, of ways that you can use this brand, uh, with different colors, different divisions if we want to, uh, with or without that. That's our primary colors, shows displayed in several different ways, uh, that it can be used. And also our, our brand font is the same as the city font now, is, is the Mozzarella font. Mozzarella font? Still not sure. It sounded right anyway. Uh, so we're using that same font with, font with this brand as well. Uh, this shows you some different uses of the brand, uh, how it can be used for different vehicles. Also on different uniforms and swag there. Uh, so we're excited about this. This is a big step that we had to go through the last few months, uh, to get us on our way, uh, in preparation for, uh, the opening of now the Fit City Center. I don't have to secretly call it the rec center anymore, although that's what it is. It is now the Fit City Center. So, uh, any questions you have for me? Thanks for giving me a few minutes to, to do unveil this, uh, this information.
Dale, one of the questions that we got at the school, at least that I received from some of the eighth graders was, when can they start swimming?
When can we start swimming? Okay, I'm going to take my best guess. Let me look into my crystal ball. We are scheduled, uh, to have a, to be mostly done with the, the construction in September. We will have probably a month of punch lists and other things. So my best guess is going to say we're, we're shooting for a grand opening, uh, in probably in, in November. Assuming everything goes okay. There's still a few things we're nervous about. We have everything here. We just have to make sure that it all gets constructed in a proper manner. So, uh, that's going to be my best guess. We're hoping to have some soft openings in October, uh, maybe a grand opening in November. Hopefully it's sooner if we can, but that's as general as I can possibly be. Good, good political answer.
What's one of the things that, that's slowing you down in terms of the, the specific elements of the rec center, of the Fit City Center that, that have us going slow, speaking of when can we swim?
Okay, uh, good question, because the weather's been absolutely nice, right? So we can't blame it on the weather. Uh, the, the general contractor right now is concerned about the pools. We have, we have six different pools that need constructed. Um, and really we're dependent on one group of people that can do this. And so, uh, they're, they're moving along fairly good. Uh, I think they're going to be on schedule. Their biggest concern are the, are the, the wood basketball floors, because they have to go in last. We can't build those and they take, they take a lot of time to cure. There's a lot of layers to these things. And so they're, they're a little bit concerned about, uh, about that as well. But in terms of timing, we're, we're right there. We just got to make sure, you know, if everything stays in order and we don't have any major issues along the way, then, uh, we should be able to stick to that time schedule.
Dale, one part of this project I'm extra excited about is the outdoor portion of the facility, the swimming portion. We won't see that until probably next year, right, when it warms back up. But, uh, if I understand correctly, there'll be a, an outdoor entrance to the facility that you can come and go from as, as, as well as of course the indoor. So you'll have dual options. But could you just kind of just briefly explain how that will look, since it won't open when the rest of it will? It'll be kind of a more of a delayed opening, but just kind of what we can expect, what it'll look like and kind of how that'll feel, the outdoor, you know, part. I know it's somewhat like Provost's.
Yeah, sure. Good question. Uh, we were, we were obviously, when we started this, hopeful that we could open the whole facility together. We're getting too close to when we have to shut off water now in October and November. Uh, so we are planning right now to open the indoor portion of the facility, uh, which has pools inside as well. So you will not be deprived of swimming. But, uh, then we're looking at, at, at opening the outdoor aquatic center, which has, uh, which has a program pool, a lazy river, also has a, a, a zero depth, as well as some, some tall water slides. Uh, so that'll be a fun aquatics, outdoor aquatics facility to open, uh, which will open probably late spring and summer, uh, the next, this next year, the year after. Yeah, you guys look good, by the way.
Thank you. Probably just for our listeners or viewers, will you just go over what the senior center is going to look like? I think oftentimes we say it's a rec center, but it's also a combo. Tell us a little bit about the senior center. it's also a combo. Tell us a little bit about the senior center.
Yeah, thanks for asking. You'll notice in our, in our video that we had several shots of seniors and senior programs and things that we do there. We're excited about the senior portion of this. Not only are they gonna have access to the entire facility now, but they have a facility that's much nicer, every bit as nice as what they currently have or better. We certainly have a big banquet room. We've got a stage. We've got all the chairs and tables and all the things, pianos and all the things that they currently have that they'll be able to enjoy, as well as, you know, once they get memberships, they can enjoy the other amenities in the recreation center. But we've got an art room. We've got kilns. They're not gonna be missing anything. So, we're excited for that portion of it, too. Mainly, too, because I think you're gonna attract more active seniors, as well as the existing ones. We're gonna do new programming for seniors as well, geared towards the senior programming they have had, plus add a bunch that is attractive for those more active seniors. That answer your question?
Yes, and I have one more. I think a lot of our residents are all wondering, how much is this going to be? You've given us some proposals. When can the public expect to see final numbers for memberships and admission?
I think those already hit the internet, didn't they?
Did they?
Well, I don't know.
Oh, they weren't accurate, though.
They have hit the internet as proposed numbers.
Yeah, you typically would approve those with the July budget. So, we, until then, I guess the best term to use would be proposed until you actually take action on them. But we would propose them officially in the budgets that we do, starting in May.
Yeah. So, the fees, the fees that we presented to you guys, which have been posted, are the fees we're going to propose to you guys in the budget. So, thanks Seth. That's the right answer. We can't say they're official until they've gone through the budget process and approved by you. But those are the fees. If people want to know what we're proposing to charge, that's where we're gonna land.
And they can just find that online on our website. Okay, thank you.
Dale, just one final question. This is a big project, not only for you and your team, but just for the city as well. I'm just kind of curious for you and those who are working on it in Parks and Recreation, what are you most excited about with this massive project?
I'm excited for what this brings to Spanish Fork. This has been on a bucket list of mine for many years. And we love what this brings to our citizens, the opportunities they have for, for health and wellness, not only physical health, but mental health. And it's a gathering place. Again, that's kind of what we promote in our department, is not only quality of life, but it's a gathering place for our citizens, which keeps the small-town feel, even though we're growing at an incredible pace. So, we're excited, we were totally excited to get, it's stressful to name a facility, get a brand together. This is a big hurdle for us. We're excited for this portion, and then really excited to get this open and accessible to our public, because they're the ones that are gonna benefit from having this tremendous facility in our community. We're excited about all of it. If you wanted me to talk about individual components, I love them all.
Thank you.
I thought he was gonna answer, "I'm excited for it to be done."
That's what I thought he was gonna say, too.
Okay, you read my mind.
Dale, we appreciate, we appreciate your leadership, your department on this. Again, the city staff working in conjunction with all departments to bring this to a reality and soon to be done. But I guess I just want to remind the public at large, as we get excited and see things take shape down there, a lot of times, Channel 16 is just stuck at my house to watch the construction of it sometimes. How boring is that? I could just walk down there and probably watch it, too. But thank you to the men and women that work down there to build such a good facility. Thank you to your department to oversee them and make sure it's done right every single day. And to the citizens of Spanish Fork, we're in a time where you're seeing public health talked about in our nation, and chronic health issues and everything else, and how do we improve it? I think this is one of the best ways to do it. Community by community, we lead out in giving our residents options to be able to be healthy and do it together. We, not every community has an all-abilities park. Not every community has sprawling soccer fields and baseball and softball fields and pickleball courts in something that rivals Central Park in a community of 45,000-plus, but we do. And it's an envy of a lot of the state and surrounding states of what we do. And this is just another component to it that'll make the ability for people to come and improve their physical, mental, and social health together year-round is a game changer for us. And so, for you leading out on it, from me to you personally, you know this, but from the council as well, thank you. Thank you for sticking with it. Thank you for leading on this, and we're excited for everyone to see it completed.
You're welcome. Obviously, I'm the face. There's a lot of worker bees in my department that have put a lot of time and effort into all of this. The branding, overseeing, construction stuff, and other departments in the city as well that are taking place. So, this is truly a team effort across the city. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
Appreciate it, Dale. Okay, another good thing. Seth, anything you wanted to add to that from the city manager perspective?
No, I think you did a great job. I love the look of the logo, and I think it fits beautifully. Great name, good job.
Okay, takes us to nine on our agenda, the consent items. We have consent items A through E here. If anyone has any questions about any of those, please feel free to ask. And if there are no questions, I'd entertain a motion for the consent items.
I move to approve the consent items.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Marshall. Roll call vote here. Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Consent items are approved.
For the record, I think that's the first time that Shane's ever seconded anything I motioned.
Really?
That's probably true. Undo my second?
It's probably, it's probably personal, Jesse.
I think it is.
Okay, takes us to our public hearings tonight. Item 10, we have two public hearings, A and B. The first one is ordinance for the 920 West annexation. Mr. David G. Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. We're gonna talk about a six-and-a-half acre property. It's located at approximately 200 north, 920 west. It's adjacent to the Sunset Park subdivision, which is right here. So, again, six-and-a-half acres, currently surrounded by properties that are in Spanish Fork, for the most part on the east side and on the south side, obviously abutting there, I-15 as well. On its western boundary, in November, the council accepted this proposed annexation for further study. We've been through the process of preparing a feasibility study. You have that, along with the staff report. We've been through a protest period. We did not receive any protests to the proposed annexation. The subject property in this case has been in the city's annexation policy for a number of decades. And as it's gone through the process of having been reviewed by the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission, each of those two bodies have recommended that it be approved. The general plan for the subject property, just a photo of it there, identifies it for medium-density residential development. We're talking about this right here, that yellow color, designating that particular density, which would be three-and-a-half to eight units to the acre. Again, just another image of it. I'm gonna use this to just note one thing that's a little bit unique about the property. And with six acres, generally speaking, it wouldn't have a lot of development potential. There are a couple of things that are unique about it, providing sewer service in this part of the community. It's actually a little bit of a challenge. So, to do that, as I understand it, one of two things likely would have to happen. Either a lift station of some type would need to be installed to serve this, or potentially, somebody could bring in enough dirt to raise the whole elevation of the property, which is similar to something that happened in a development that Ivory Homes constructed a few years ago to the south of this, this property, just on the south side of what would be Center Street, as it extends to the west. Also, access. Right now, there are 12 homes in the subject, excuse me, in the Sunset Park subdivision right here, all of which that rely on, on what is a dead end of 920 west for access. Right now, Spanish Fork City only allows up to 35 homes on a dead-end system like that. So, with that, there would be a limit on the number of homes that could be constructed here, which is not, it's not really out of line necessarily with the general plan designation, but 35 minus 12, we're at 23. So, that's one thing that we would talk about if we received a development proposal for the subject property, which we haven't yet. Just the annexation plat, these are the things that I just touched on. And then to get to what, again, has been reviewed by the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission. Proposal to annex the subject property, again, I'll say it, where we don't have a development proposal on the table right now, it's particularly easy to use what oftentimes is kind of, we call it a holding zone, which is the residential zone. The applicants have requested that, in fact, with the annexation proposal. And simply put, with those two findings and the condition that the subject property be zoned, we're residential at the time of annexation. Staff recommends that the annexation be approved.
Any questions for Dave before we go into public hearing? Thank you, Dave. The applicant, would the applicant, as if they're here, would like to speak before we go into public hearing? Sure, yep, come on up. State your name, so we get it on the record.
Hi, my name's Austin Pritchett. So, some of you know me, some of you don't. We've got over 200 acres in the city of Spanish Fork that we're working through right now. You'll see me a lot this year, now that the general plan's been submitted. Hopefully, we're back in action. It's been a couple of years since we've been up trying to do some of these things. But one thing I'd like you guys to know about our group, almost always, we're working with the landowners. So, on this property, the landowner, the historic landowner is our partner. And they've been good to the city. They've done exactly what the city's asked. They've moved on to a different area with less housing, because they like to be farmers. And they're trusting us to kind of bring this through the process and do what's right. And what we've done on all of our projects, as you'll see, is we take the city's general plan, and we do exactly that. So, the state needs housing. The city knows it needs to participate in some housing. We're, we're asking for medium-density residential, exactly like the general plan goes. And we're doing it on behalf of the landowner. So, it's not just some developer coming in and doing it one-off, right? We're here for the long haul. So, anyways, yeah, that's the plan. And it was a surprise to us to hear the 35-unit limit, which, correct me if I'm wrong, there's, I think probably what will happen is the piece to the north eventually one day, not anytime soon. We've talked to them. We'll come in and there may be another access. But yeah, we're willing to work with the city on what's required. So, excited to get on this project, and hopefully, it's something you guys will accept.
Thank you, Austin. Any questions for Austin, for the applicant? Thank you. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded. Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Euler. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item A. Anybody from the public that would like to speak regarding the 920 West annexation proposal? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Took. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Discussion back up here for this ordinance. Any questions for staff or the applicant about this annexation proposal? If not, I would entertain a motion for item A.
Sorry, Mayor, I did want to say one thing. I think that what was touched on is important as we talk about annexations, and I think we bring this up all the time, is that the landowners are the ones who initiate this. It's not the city who goes and tries to annex this. It's the property owners who are wanting to do something with their land. And so, I think it's an important factor in all of this. And as I go forward with the approval, that's what I would be honing in on.
Thank you. Thank you. Good point. Appreciate that detail. Any other comments, questions about this before a motion? Anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would go ahead and do it. I move that the proposed annexation be approved based on the following findings and subject to the following condition. Findings, number one, that the subject property is located within the city's annexation policy and growth management boundary. Number two, that the city's general plan land use designation for the annexation area is medium-density residential, with the condition that the rural and residential zone should be assigned to the annexation area.
Motion made by Councilman Took.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Euler. Roll call vote here. Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
And Councilman Took.
Yes.
Thank you. Item A is approved. Takes us to item B of public hearing, the Larson Agriculture Protection Area.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, over the past few months, I've become very familiar with agriculture protection areas, something that I had no knowledge of previous. And so, I wanted to start off by highlighting some of the key elements of the application process, the review, and your role in whether or not an agricultural protection area is approved. So, the purpose behind APAs, to provide landowners legal protection from nuisance complaints, from, you know, future developments that would come in and around an area that would be approved. Notices provided to future residents, so that they are aware that an APA is present within 300 feet. And it also limits cities and counties from practicing eminent domain on property that is being used for agriculture. This is the language from the state code, showing the, what needs to be on plats for subdivisions within 300 feet of an APA, just alerting residents and developers of what it is and the requirements of that. So, the application process, it needs to be signed by a majority of landowners, as well as the owners of the majority of the land area. So, it can't just be a few owners, including a large piece where that property owner isn't involved. And then a list of the items that are submitted with the application. So, the requirements, basically, it needs to be a minimum of 20 acres that are contiguous and receiving green belt tax benefits. And it can be less than that, based on the type of agriculture that's done, as well as whether or not it's adjacent to an existing APA. The process is very strict and laid out very clearly in state law. There's a 15-day initial comment period for residents that are noticed within 1,000 feet of the proposal. There's a 45-day review period for the Planning Commission and the Utah County Agriculture Advisory Board, and they make recommendations to the city council. If those recommendations don't come within those 45 days, it's automatically a recommendation for approval. And then, the complete timeline of 120 days from the date that the application is received, is when the city council would need to make their decision on the, otherwise, if the decision is not reached, it again also becomes automatically created.
Sorry to interrupt you, but when was this one received? Do you know the date?
I've got a timeline.
Cool, thank you.
That I will show you to break that down for you. So, the criteria that's in our code, as far as evaluating whether or not it should be approved, or if it should be modified, those types of things, it's based on, is it being used for agriculture? Is it zoned for agriculture use? Viability, if there are any improvements that are being proposed or trends in agriculture. And then the last one, based on if there are any plans for roads, parks, utilities, commercial development, that those are considered as part of the review. So, before we get into it, there's a couple of unique aspects with this proposal. One is that two of the parcels are currently in a residential zone, which does limit the types of agriculture that can be done. There's animals that are restricted based on the size of the property, whereas in other agriculture zones, there is no limit. And also, item C, you can see there, it says no animals shall be kept in a residential- Um, and also, uh, item C, you can see there, it says, no animals shall be kept in a residential zone for purpose of commercial production. Uh, another unique aspect is that there's, uh, one of the parcels that does not benefit from green belt, um, status. So that's just something that we wanted the city council to be aware of. So this is the area that's being proposed for the APA. It's roughly forty acres on the southwest corner of the city. Um, this is a breakdown of the ownership of those five parcels and the amount of acreage that's included. Uh, once again, the zoning for the western portion is in a residential zone. Uh, the remainder is in a rural residential zone that's, that does have agricultural rights. According to the current general plan, it's a medium density residential, uh, on a majority of it, with some estate density residential that's, uh, part of that, the current plan that's in place. Here's that timeline that I was referencing. So that shows the hundred and twenty days from the top arrow to the bottom arrow. The red rectangle there shows where we are right now, February fourth, the city council hearing, and how close we are getting to that deadline of March seventh, and the steps in between. This is the proposal that was presented to the DRC and to the Planning Commission, showing a, a modification of what the original proposal was to account for, uh, future roadways, utility corridors, like, uh, I mentioned in the, the review criteria. Um, the, it's been talked about, different options and, and ways that this could be considered, but this was the last, uh, option that was presented and, uh, before those bodies.
Dave, was this the option that was presented to the Ag Board, Utah County Agricultural Board?
They, they received the original application, and so that's, that was what was presented to them.
They approved the original application?
They recommended approval as it was presented to them.
Okay, alright.
So instead of just giving you, uh, one recommendation for staff, we wanted to give you some options of what's available to the council, to either approve it based on what was, uh, presented and recommended for approval, uh, by the Planning Commission. Or some amendments could, uh, take place based on the zoning or the green belt status. You could, uh, continue it to, uh, further investigate other things that, that you might want to take into consideration and, and have it delayed until the eighteenth, which would still be in that window of a hundred and twenty days, or deny the proposal. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
The, I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
Oh, no, just, yep, I've, any questions for David? Yep, before we go into public hearing, yes.
The Planning Commission, it didn't look like they approved anything. They sort of just let it go.
Was it because it was past the time?
Yeah, unfortunately, we, we had scheduled it for the, the Planning Commission meeting in January that was going to be on the eighth. Because we didn't have a quorum, that unfortunately had to be moved, so that pushed us out of that forty-five day window.
Okay.
Can you go back one slide? So, just so I'm clear, this is what was presented to the Ag Board, or the wasn't, this isn't the same one?
This is what was presented to the Planning Commission.
Okay, what was presented to the Ag Board?
The Ag Board was basically the area outline.
So including that road?
Yes.
Okay. Or I guess those two roads. And then you said that, so the parcel that's in the brighter green, it's R one thirty, if I'm seeing that right?
That's correct.
So they have animal right uses on there. What is their limitations in comparison to normal ag? Do you know? I know, that's a really very specific question, so.
So that's, I copied the, straight out of the code so that we had it there to reference. But basically, it's, uh, two animals, well, it's ba, based on size, but, um, it's, you're allowed certain amount per, uh, half acre.
Gotcha.
So the property that is, uh, in the R one thirty zone is roughly nine or ten acres.
Ten.
If you go to that section of code, there's also a table that delineates a little bit more clearly the, the number of animals per the units of acres as well, so you can.
Ag protection on that property would not make it so they can do more on their property than what they're currently allowed to do?
Correct, that's why zoning is one of the, the criteria.
Thank you.
For review.
And maybe just piggyback on that question, but this acreage is being used how now? It's in the applications, it shows irrigated pasture for grazing, so I guess it could be some animals on it.
Yeah, you can see, um, this parcel and the larger parcel are two that are in the, that have the green belt status where, uh, the majority of the agriculture is being done currently. There is a house, um, that was part of a subdivision that's right here.
It's got kids in it that act like animals, but not animals.
So that parcel is the only one that's not on green belt? Is that correct?
Yeah, that and the, the two smaller parcels owned by the city that are part of the, the right-of-way.
Thank you, David. Any other questions for David?
Do you have, do we have any other APA areas in this location?
Within this, um, in this location? Here, I can show you. So. So in the county, there's roughly, a lot of that area is all under APA.
To abut it?
So it does abut it on, on that side right there.
Okay, can you go to the DRC Planning Commission recommendation with the roads and utility corridors taken out? On this, that, yep, that one. On that picture, I don't even know what direction this is, south, south, is that currently county APA?
So yeah, this is in the county, and, uh, I believe most of that is currently under APA.
Is the road included in that APA or excluded like we've, you've drawn?
It's probably included, but I would have to confirm that.
Okay.
And that was something that was talked about with the Agriculture Advisory Board, whether or not to, to include the roads, and they just felt that it wouldn't be an issue to just include it because the state law does say that, uh, as far as being contiguous, it's allowed to have a road or canal or something that's separated.
Gotcha. That'll give me my next question. Okay.
Good questions. Any other questions for David before public hearing?
Maybe a comment, Mayor. One of the reasons why, if you'll go back to that map, David, thank you. Uh, one of the reasons why I think staff had recommended that strip that runs east to west be excluded was for, uh, future easements. I think it's very important to understand that the easements associated with that have been, have been, um, acquired, and I think from staff's perspective, we don't think that would need to stay out anymore. They've, the easement's been, been acquired and, and therefore, um.
It could be included.
They can be, they can be built and, 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 uh, constructed according to the, the language of the easement.
So Seth, if I'm hearing you right, the only ones that you guys are recommending maybe not including is the north-south roads that are already currently there with your new, what you're saying?
Yeah, I think staff's recommendation would always be to leave the roads out.
Right, the ones that are currently there.
Yeah.
Not the east-west one.
Yeah. I think our interpretation would be that you don't need to include the roads to have the contiguous nature because roads are always going to be there.
Right.
But they, they would abut anyway. Is that fair to say, Vaughn?
That's good. But not just the, the roads as they exist today, but rather the, the master plan with those roads.
Right, with the widening.
Yeah. And, and, and then, of course, there was some discussion, I don't remember, I wasn't in DRC, so I don't remember how they, what their end result was, but there was some discussion, of course, about some of the properties that were smaller, as, as David talked about.
Thank you, Seth. Anything else for David before public hearing?
Just go to that last screen so we can let it sink in a sec. Yeah, let me.
Options.
Options.
Got them.
Okay.
Okay, uh, if there's nothing else for David right now, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
I move to go into public hearing. Oh, sorry, Kevin.
Go ahead.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilman Euler. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in a public hearing for item B. Uh, please come up and make sure to get your name on the record for Tara, and, uh, please ask or make comments for the item.
So, Mayor, it, it looks like we have the time up.
Yes.
Do we typically time the applicant?
Oh, yes, we can, uh, yeah, before we go to public hearing, yes.
Yep, yep.
We can, we can hear from the applicant. Go ahead.
I don't get a timer for once, this is great.
Well, we don't typically have the applicant in the public hearing.
Oh, that would have been.
Either before or after, yeah.
Right.
So.
I can wait till after if you want.
That's your, me, uh, that's probably why.
That's a, that's a good point.
You don't officially, you can, we can get out of public hearing, uh.
Let's move out.
And for the applicant to speak.
You want me to just wait till after?
No, you're okay. I move that we go out of public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilman Euler. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're out of public hearing. Applicant, please, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my name is Jackie Larson, I am the applicant. Um, I am speaking on behalf of the Larsons and the S, they're also man-laws. So first, let me start by saying, I would like you as city council to approve the proposal of the forty-one point seven acres, as it is depicted in the map which I submitted with my completed application on November sixth, and consistent with both advisory board and planning commission with no conditions. So la, the Larson family has a long and rich history in farming and ranching in Leland. Spanish Fork is the most favorably suited for the purposes of agriculture and stock-raising, and despite being on the edge of a growing city, our farms still exhibit characteristics consistent with those generations before us. Jack, I don't know if you saw, I sent you an email, the three, can you pull those up? So there's three slides I wanted to show you that I think might be beneficial.
Maybe we should have timed it.
This is my one opportunity to not be.
Really? Does that mean you're never going to come back with another opportunity?
I've been accumulating all the times I don't talk. I'm just gonna keep a running chart. Okay, so that first one, the Larson Act protected area that I'm requesting be approved is forty-one point seven acres in the purple on that top one. It's adjoining the Leland twenty-twenty-three Act protection of roughly two hundred seventy-five acres, that's in the green. And I also show within the policy boundary is, um, two other Act protected areas, the Willings-Bosley area and the Money area in the blue. So the second slide down, so my proposal today is follows the city-county boundary and then continues along the north and east following fence lines in my, in the purple. This does include within it the roads for both seventeen hundred west and two thousand west. The Leland twenty-twenty-three Act protection also includes these roads and future corridors. It's fundamentally the same as my proposal before you today, and I submitted it, the application to the county proposing all those quarters in it. So at that time, Spanish Fork City did also ask that the county, so they asked to the county that my proposal be modified to exclude those widths for future road utilities and hu, future road widths and utility corridors. That Leland twenty-twenty-three proposal went before the Ag Advisory Board, the Planning Commission, and then all three county commissioners were unanimously approved each time. And that approval included the road widths and future utility and road corridors within it. So the very same corridors, very same road widths. The staff conditions on January twenty-second, they recommend approval with the condition that the legal description for the Ag protection area not include the corridors based on the city street and utility master plans. So if you want to go to the third slide, just the last one. What's still kind of confusing to me is that, the, based on the city's master plan, the streets and utilities are about six hundred to four hundred feet north from the other corridor that was set to be the master plan, so I'm not really sure what's going to be going with at that width, if it's just, if the city's going to come take roads later or what have you. Then, within my proposal does include two city parcels, but the parcel that is depicted on the east, it's actually going to be, let's see, go up to the second slide. In between the two sides of the road there, along, is that two thousand? Seventeen hundred west, sorry. That parcel of the cities is actually not in the correct location, and it does not extend past the fence line on that west property, and it needs to be moved to the correct location. DRC previously in, um, their minutes, does also acknowledge that it should have been shifted when, um, Bodie built his home next to Gary's. I think that's just even later. So I would like to work with Travis, the city surveyor, to get that situated in the correct location. And then after it's been corrected, if the city wants to, go on ahead and remove the city parcels from Act protection or leave them in. The city isn't planning on building anything immediately, then there's really no reason to rush. So.
So which piece is that?
It's in between, maybe if you went to staff's presentation, and we'll show it easier.
The road on the left?
The center, the road in the center. I think that's what you're talking about, is the road in the center of the proposal, right?
Yes.
There's some boundary issues potentially in there.
I think we would disagree with that, but.
Okay. Okay. Either way, I mean.
Right, it's road.
If, yeah, I guess if the city has property and they're not, you're gonna, we are going to develop it the way we want to develop it either, anyway, so it.
Right.
And I've talked to Travis Warren, he said that it was aligned incorrectly, and the DRC minutes, it, both for the preliminary plat and the final plat, it does say that it needs to be shifted when they updated the boundary line with the county. So it's the width between the yellow and purple there.
Okay.
It should actually only go from the yellow into the road. It doesn't continue past the fence line into the field that's purple below.
Okay.
So I'm asking that you just simply approve the proposal as I submitted of the forty-one point seven acres, consistent with both the advisory board and the planning commission with no conditions. And then beyond that, I still want to work to move that boundary of that parcel there that we just talked about, and then work together with the city towards what's best for both of us. So, that being said, I ask that the draft ordinance be changed to remove the text where it says that whereas consistent with the principles outlined by Farley versus Utah County, that the city council deserves to mod, or desires to modify the proposal to exclude from the APA the land's plan for utility corridors, and then a text in section one, that entire paragraph, that they, wants to be excluded. And then what's described in Exhibit A would also be changed to reflect that the boundary description encompassing the entire forty-one point seven acres. So lastly, I know that with the corridors and road widths, that there's been a lot of discussion, essentially what I'm hearing is that the city's concern is having to go to the Ag Advisory Board or UDAF, and being told that the city can't take property within Act protection by eminent domain. For Ag operations to function and continue, they require support systems, facilities, infrastructure to remain viable. And this, in some cases or contexts, it can be specific to agriculture. So for the agricultural community, it's vital to understand the soil complexities and the infrastructure components that impact them. And it includes the farms, markets, businesses that support the farms within the area. So a key issue regarding the infrastructure is that there's numerous decision-makers that directly or indirectly determine its location, availability, capacity. When elected and appointed officials plan, design, regulate, and construct a community's infrastructure system, they need to do so considering all the individuals or businesses that need to use it and the common good of the community as a whole. Many cases, this will include departments and board members and others that can involve both state and federal officials and agencies. So if there's any concern for the city with the process for those involved, um, I have some individuals with me here today. So they have extensive experience and knowledge in the agricultural industry, and I very much appreciate them coming to be here. So I have Jay Olson, here from UDAF, so Utah Department of Ag and Food, Richard Valing, he's the board member for the Utah County Ag Advisory Board, and he's supervisor with Temple Neebo Conservation District, and Diane Garcia, who you all know as a resident, and by profession, she manages a farm one assessment. Green belts is not a qualification to be into Act protection. So if you have questions about whether it does or doesn't, she can also put that. Do you guys have any questions for me? That's all I have.
Jackie, before you sit down, um, we received some emails potentially of some proposed, um, verbiage change. Have you received those, or have you talked about those?
I have.
Okay, I was just wondering. Thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant before going into public hearing?
No.
We might have questions after public hearing, bring them back up. Thank you, Jackie. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
I move to go into public hearing.
Motion made by Councilman Took.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Euler. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Now we are in public hearing. Please come up and let us know who you are and, uh, speak to us.
Okay, um, Mayor Mendenhall and Councilmen Beck, Carden, Marshall, Euler, and Took, thank you. Appreciate you, uh, giving me a chance to speak before you today and for reading the emails that we sent to you.
Can you get your name on the record for Tara to get it down?
Yes, Clint Harris.
Thank you, Clint.
And my wife, Janice, and we live at nine seventy-three South, two thousand west, so right next to the property we're talking about. So when I saw, first saw the, uh, letter that came out, um, I thought, well, great for the Larsons, they're working on that. And then I saw the road that was in it, and that caused. working on that, and then I saw the road that was in it, and that caused some questions, and, and we'll get into that here in a minute, but I just do wanna say that we have great neighbors in Gary and Suzanne. They are wonderful, good stewards of their land, we support Gary and Suzanne in their constitutional right to tend, cultivate, and protect their lands as they see fit. As neighboring landowners, Janice and I have a constitutional right to tend, cultivate, and protect our lands. After some research, Janice and I feel that current verbiage regarding the state and city code for the agricultural protected area benefits Gary and Suzanne's constitutional, uh, land rights and jeopardizes our constitutional rights as neighboring landowners. We have asked Katie Kostow, um, a former city council member, to speak on our behalf of the pros and cons of implementing an agricultural protection area. I feel very strongly that there is a need to protect the agriculture and the farmland here in Spanish Fork. However, I do not feel that the APA is the best tool for the city to implement, and I worry about the repercussions it will have on neighboring landowners and for the city. I also worry that this overlay is not the best tool for the general plan that is mapped out in the city. Please keep her remarks in mind as you make your decision tonight. My simple request is that you deny the APA application and consider other options to help protect all farming land in Spanish Fork. In the event that you do consider approving the APA application, I ask that you consider adding the following verbiage to the proposals that will help to protect neighboring landowners. And I do have that here, uh, is it okay if I approach the council and hand you these?
Sure. You can hand it there and they'll pass it down?
Thank you.
Thank you, Clint.
So to summarize, I ask that only farming that is currently used on the land be allowed in the requested APA area, that all future development in surrounding areas of the APA have a non-interference clause, and that some of the verbiage in the APA be removed from the proposal. At any point, uh, and, excuse me, if at any point any of this information seems overwhelming or rushed, please consider denying the application and looking into other options of protecting Spanish Fork's farmlands. Thank you.
Thank you, Clint.
Thank you, Clint.
Hello, Mayor Mendenhall and City Council. Um, my name's Janice Harris, and I'm Clint's wife, and I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak about my concerns and solutions for the proposed APA. Clint and I really do enjoy our neighbors, the Larsons are great neighbors, and we do believe in the farming community and, and supporting their endeavors to protect their farmland. And it's our hope that tonight's discussion will not be, you know, any contention, but just that we might find common ground. And I wish, um, that we could be known that in our community that we as neighbors were able to come together and figure it out, and make it work for everybody. So, um, it's great, um, to have this, the council to help us, because we know maybe what we decide might help and, or influence other things too. So Clint and I have become a little more educated on, but I'm still not totally knowledgeable, I know. So I'm glad that you're able to have the, we're able to have some more help here too to understand it, and that you have the information too. But as you listen to, um, so anyway, we were educated on the current city and state codes for APAs, and we were concerned that there might be some negative effects that it will have on our property rights since we're right next door to each other. So we want you to, if you would, listen to these options that are presented tonight, and please consider denying this APA request, and look into working with the current city zoning laws to find a solution at the city level. But I do appreciate your time, um, serving our community, and and I hope that we can figure some good solutions together. Thank you.
Thanks, Janice.
Thanks, Janice.
Hello, Council, my name is Katie Quayvisto, I, um, am gonna give you a lot of information in a short amount of time, so I apologize, I hope I can be really, really quick with it, but I used to be on the council for Lehigh City, and we were granted, uh, or we, uh, implemented an APA, it was the one and only APA that we've ever done in the city and will never do it again. This is really, really important, the timelines that you guys were presented are actually incorrect, and I apologize, but the APA has really, really hard teeth, and it's, it's, it's used, um, it's like a hammer, it can be a tool that can either build a house or it can tear it down. And, um, one of the requirements with an APA is, once it has been submitted, a council has a hundred and twenty days to make a decision on that. This, the, uh, application was submitted on October sixteenth to the county, the clock is ticking, and so with that said, a decision has to be made by the council before February thirteenth. And, um, your next meeting isn't until the eighteenth, so I just wanna press kind of a little bit of a, um, a little bit of pressure there that a decision has to be made tonight, whether you approve, deny, or, um, approve with conditions for that. With that said, I kinda wanna come in as a middle ground, I wanna talk to, uh, a little bit about, not necessarily taking sides, but give you the information that we have from Lehigh City. Um, the APA that we granted was to a, um, a mink farmer, um, by the name of Mr. Johnson, and, um, it was given out of good faith from the city. It ended up being, um, a tu- a, a tool that was weaponized against the city. Um, and what the APA does is, while it has a lot of strong language that protects the applicants themselves, it, um, doesn't give any protection to the neighbors that are around it, or the property owners that are around it. And because of that, it caused a lot of problems for the ci- the city of, um, Lehigh. So the two options that we wish we would have considered as Lehigh, um, since this is the first time that you guys are seeing this as a council, is number one, you can do what the Harrises have suggested where they have verbiage that you can add to the APA if you choose to decide to wanna move this forward. However, you have to be really, really careful with it, because if you don't cross your Ts correctly or dot your Is, you could end up, it could end up backfiring with you, which is tense, it was the case with the Planning Commission and with the Advisory Board, which is no fault of their own. That's how aggressive the APA is. It is a, it can be a good tool used in the proper situation, it's just not here. My suggestion would be, and I wish Lehigh City would have, um, adopted this, um, is that to actually deny this application, there's no repercussions for the applicant, if they were to come back and file this the next day, they can absolutely do that. If they, if you were to deny this, you can instead work with city zoning that you currently have to be able to tighten the regulations that are to protect the agriculture that is there. Listening to the conversations that have been happening with, with the Larsons, we, the Harrises support trying to protect the agriculture, that's, that's really important to them. And the APA, in my opinion, isn't that tool to, to do this, and so be very, very careful when you're working with a missile, whether you need that missile or not, um, and just to see as if you've experienced how quickly this has, has, has happened. Keep that in mind as you make that decision tonight. Lastly, I just wanted to, to, um, to state that the Harrises love the Larsons, they wanna work with them, they wanna be able to find a solution, and, um, they're not here, as, as Janice said, to create contention, they wanna be able to find a solution, and in order for you to be able to, um, have that control that's there and still be able to work with not only agricultural land that's necessarily on the Larsons, but on all agricultural land, um, you can also work with the neighboring, um, landowners as well. Thank you for your time and I appreciate that, consider denying this, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Katie.
Well, hello, um, so Dean Ingram, um, Arrive Homes. We have the property that's kinda surrounds the other side of this, um, and I think, I didn't know that was happening, but, um, originally that was split, so I've been working with Gary, and he's been wonderful to work with, um, about taking two utilities through there, the gravity-fed ones that will help in developing this, the property that I have. And I think for some reason, I think the thought was, well, we need to split that in order for that, those utilities to go through, 'cause we have a plat that's in, you know, that we're going through the, the process with DRC right now. And so this is the easement that was, that was talked about with, uh, with Seth, we met with engineering, um, Cory didn't show up, but everybody else was there. But, uh.
In fairness, I don't think he was invited.
And I think, um, anyway, so we kinda worked it out that if we had the easement already, there's not a need to, to, um, take that section out. The fear is, and I'm not supportive at all for me to, to interfere at all with what the Larsons are doing on their property. I think that you're already, as far as I, I'm not, Vaughn's the, the attorney, he's gonna have to figure that part out, but I don't think it affects anything as far as, you already have, it's already in the city, the curtain zone, there's certain restrictions that are already there. I don't see how him doing what he wants to do on his property affects me, what I wanna do on mine. We all have restrictions that we have already built in, right? So, um, but his fear was if you pull that out, that you would put a, you know, that eventually it could be a road put through there, and he's got cows on both sides, and it, it, obviously that would affect his ability to be able to enjoy his property how each of us would wanna enjoy ours, that we've used it for, you know, decades they have, um, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna mess with that at all. I want them to be able to continue to do what they have done in the past, and I think that's all they're asking also. Like I said, he's been great to work with, um, s- sitting down and, um, and, and the gravity-fed utilities are underground, so it, those will not affect his property, that's why he's been willing to do the easement through there, which would take out the need to, to split that at all. Which I wouldn't have, like, I, I don't wanna take, I wouldn't be supportive of that, somebody doing that to me, so I wouldn't want for my development, I'd find another way to do it if he wasn't willing to, to sit down and be the, you know, the person he's been to be able to, to do the easement. But yeah, that's kinda where I'm at, I, I think you kinda know where I'm at, I'm, I think I bordered a lot of his property, actually.
To the east?
Yeah. I actually have the other piece that's next to him there, um, that, that, uh, but anyways, yeah, I'm, the, our, the disdevelopment is on the east side there, it kinda surrounds it. Yeah. The silo, yeah. So anyways, that.
Thanks, Dean.
Thank you, Dean.
Thanks.
Good question.
Thank you.
Okay.
You, Dean?
Mayor, City Council, my name is Richard Bailing. I sat on that Ag Protection Board. I'm also a member of the Timp Nebo Conservation District. There was a reason why if you would take and pull up the Ag Protection Zones, the ones that are there, and the ones that, or the one that is, uh, proposed, there was a reason why, um, the roads and that were included in that, in that number one contiguous, um, property. The other is, is in many cases in the county and in the state, the property owners actually own the road. And for a period of time, the city of, uh, Spanish Fork is never going to make it through this area because there's already an existing Ag Protection Zone that's in place. And so it's not gonna stop anything for fifteen years, and if, if Mr. Larson is willing to take and deal with Arrive Homes, and he has the right to do this under an Ag Protection Zone, allow them to come through, that's up to him. If I was the farmer, I'd say no. But I've been through eminent domain, and there's a reason why we have Ag Protection Zones, and that is to protect farmers and agriculture from eminent domain. And if we water down our Ag Protection Zone either within the city or within county or in the state, agriculture has no leg to stand on. It is our one stick, we, people complain that we're, um, non-elected officials. Yet, in the county, and as a property owner in the county, I don't get a chance to vote for you guys. And so you need to consider from, from my side too. So, we propose that for right now, that the Ag Protection Zone, be approved as it was presented originally without any cutouts. Do you have any questions?
Can we ask questions right now?
Uh, let's finish, we, we might ask back up, Richard.
I have some.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you. No, 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 I wasn't gonna.
You both said to me, shut up.
I've got some too.
Just Jordan.
My, my eyes said.
And Jordan.
My eyes said shut up, but I didn't say it. Kidding. Yes.
Thank you for allowing me to talk with you, I'm Jay Olson, I work for the Department of Agriculture and Food in the Conservation Division, I am a county planning coordinator for the department, and I've been involved all over the state with, uh, conflicts between legislative bodies and agricultural producers, and we try to work through those things. I appreciate the presentation from staff that pointed out that issues with the time and not meeting those time requirements. I know this is your first round on Ag Protection, so I understand that there's a lot there that takes a lot of work to figure those time periods and stuff. With that said, because they did not meet those time periods, I would say the Ag Protection's already been delivered to you as a council orig- as it was originally proposed. So, you can, you can do what you want with that. My question is, you guys put an ordinance in for Ag Protection. I assume that you want to support agriculture in your community, and this is an excellent way to do it. I would approve this the way it is, because that will show all the rest of the Ag producers or anybody else that you are really willing to follow the ordinance that you established and support agriculture. As far as, uh, I haven't read your ordinance, I probably should have, I apologize, 'cause I know I'm a state ordinance, I've got fairly good knowledge of that. To be in Ag Protection, you do not have to be in Green Belt, you don't have to qualify for Green Belt. But an Ag Protection does not limit you for Green Belt, so you're allowed to be or allowed not to be. I think that if you want more help later, the Department of Ag, we'd be willing to help and sit down and do some training so that you're a little more prepared for the next one, so that, uh, you don't run into some of these problems and you can deal with them ahead of time. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Jay.
You, Jay?
I'm gonna try, Jay, they could shut me down.
Maybe, Jay?
We don't wanna hear from you, Shane.
Diane Garcia, so as Jackie mentioned, uh, my profession for the past twenty years has been being the farmland assessment analyst for Utah County, so I deal with all of the Green Belt. And Green Belt is a lien on the land. So there are a lot of farmers in Utah County who are not on Green Belt, because they do not wanna put a lien on their land. A lot of them do, because it does give them a tax benefit. But that's what Green Belt is, is it's being taxed at the agricultural productive value and not at market value. So they have to prove that they're meeting certain levels of production to get Green Belt, to show that they're a farmer producing, but they're not required, just because they are a farmer, to be on Green Belt. It is a choice, and only the owner can put it on Green Belt, because they're signing a document placing a lien on it. As far as Ag Protection areas, I see those all the time, because I deal with all the farmers throughout the whole county. I think I know the issue in Lehigh, um, with the mink farm, and, um, part of the Ag Protection area is to help protect not only the eminent domain, but helping farmers not have nuisance, um, lawsuits and claims and, um, police reports and things like that. Now that, uh, development has encroached on my farm, there are people that, um, get upset that the animals are in the mud. They have mud on them, they shouldn't have mud on them. So, being in an Ag Protection area helps protect you, as long as you're doing normal agricultural, you know, um, practices, it protects you from those frivolous lawsuits and claims. So, um, that is an important, very important thing to remember. I believe the mink farm in Lehigh, um, they actually shut down the city's, uh, ballpark lights, because the lights affect the estress cycle of the mink. And the ballpark lights were on right next to the mink farm, um, shining and, um, interfering with the actual, um, economic, profit of the farm because of that. So, um, so there are a lot of things to consider, and it is definitely showing that you are pro-agriculture and that you are pro-farmers, and that you are pro-Spanish Fork heritage. And, um, I would say, ask for you guys to approve this.
Thanks, Ann.
Thanks, Ann.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing for item B.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilwoman Beck, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
We're out of public hearing for item B, discussion back up here. Questions for, uh, the applicant, questions for some people that came up, questions for staff?
Question for staff, um, regarding the green belt, I think Dave said that one of the qualifications was it needed to be in the green belt, and I think that's what our, our, our package shows as well, so could we clarify that?
Yeah, city code is different than state code.
We upped the game in city code.
Yeah. I'll get the reference right here, Vaughn, 15, 3, 28, 040A. We identify one of the categories, one of the requirements being within green belt.
And that's, so that's saying because we created an ag protection zone inside Spanish Fork City, when we created that, here's the stipulations we put on it.
Right, yeah, we can take the state law and, and then do, we can make our own ordinances out.
Can you say that code one more time?
One, two, three, four. 15, 3, 28, 040A.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. 15, 3, 28, 040A, B, and C.
Can I get the state code to that, too, to compare it?
I don't know that it matters at this moment, like, we're, we're talking about city code. We have.
Do you want, I was gonna say, I just happen to have it if you need.
Yeah, we reference state code and stuff.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the city code.
I'm having a hard time finding it.
I get down to 15, 3, 24, and then I'm done.
Where are you at? Are you on community code?
I'm on Spanish Fork's website, but I need to go to the, find the other one.
Okay, Shane, you probably, I think you had another question.
All right, so when we wrote it, we, we changed, we added a requirement from the, to the state code to, to make it viable for what we, what we wanted to look like in Spanish Fork. Of the 40 acres, what is the piece that's not in green belt then? Is it the dark green?
It is both city-owned parcels.
Sure.
And the Bodie Smith parcel.
Okay. And Bodie's is the R3, R30?
Very large majority of it is in green belt.
Okay, all right, so there's a small piece. Okay.
Just right here in the corner.
That's it?
Third, uh, two-thirds acre lot in the corner of this.
That's it? Okay.
Because at some point, the applicant requested a subdivision to build a home and took it out of green belt to probably build a home.
Never put it in, yeah.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, the applicant, or the, the landowners subdivided to create that lot.
Gotcha.
And so.
Not that one, the 1307?
Just zoom in, no, just to the bottom left corner, 1307, yeah.
Okay.
So, the remainder larger parcel.
Everything but that little piece?
Probably.
Okay.
I think technically, like, the front part of their houses are all still RR. Every, everything of the city zone.
That's probably a misalignment of.
So when Bodie had first gone to develop it, the boundary line used to be, like, go through the center of their house. They shifted the boundary line, that entire parcel was gonna shift with it. But when they changed the zoning first, it changed from where the city's line is now, on that, wrote it at the back end of it. The difference of, so if you go to the different green colors.
I think maybe for clarity sake, Jackie, the, according to the city ordinance, the 1307 property can't exist in the RR zone, right? So it has to be zoned R130.
And I agree absolutely, but if you pull up that green one, and I don't know if this is something that you can work on outside of this, there is a strip that does show RR.
Right, and what I'm saying is.
But I don't think it should have to apply to this.
There are shifts that the mapping systems do that aren't real to the actual ordinances that give the meets and bounds, right?
Fair, okay.
And so what I'm saying is, the zone applies to the property, and, and if there's a mapping error, we can go research and fix up.
Okay, and that won't affect the application at all?
It shouldn't. In essence, the property when it was rezoned R130, I think both the smaller lot and the larger lot, that's what we're talking about is the R130, and then the RR across the street for the larger parcel, yeah.
For clarification, in the city code, I don't see it saying green belt.
It's Farmland Assessment Act?
Yeah, the one I'm looking at at least, it just says whether, it says we should consider whether or not the land is currently being used for agricultural production, whether or not the land is zoned for agricultural use.
In 15.3.28.040, area requirements, A, in accordance with the state code reference, as amended, the minimum number of contiguous acres that must be included in an ag protection area is established as 20. Which land must be receiving the benefits of Title 59, Chapter 2, Part 5, Farmland Assessment Act?
I was looking in the evaluation criteria in AD. Just making sure we're aligned.
So we verified?
Verified, yeah, it is in our code.
Okay.
You gonna start with your question, or you cut you off again?
Yeah.
Shane, are you? Nope, keep going, I'll, I'll remember it in a second.
Richard, where did you go? Do you mind coming up? I've got just a question for you. So, as a ag board member, were you, were you part of the committee, um, that initially approved this from the county side?
Yes.
When you received this application, what were the criteria, or what were the things that you looked at that you determined and made the decision that you did to approve it?
One of the reasons, uh, one of the things that I did look at is, number one, I didn't want to, uh, see an island in the middle of, uh, the ag protection zones, too. So, here again, um, on the other, the other was is that when it comes to the roads that are planned to go through there, um, the utilities and stuff like this, none of the, when I asked the Spanish Fork, um, city employee, uh, when that was planned to happen, he couldn't tell me. And also due to the fact that we're, we have ag protection zones already in place, so you're not going to develop half a road because you can't go into a portion of the other ag protection zone and, uh, force your way on that one. So, you're kind of stuck for about 15 years anyway. And so, for 15 years, you're not going to develop the road, you're not going to be able to run utilities and stuff through unless.
Because of the Leland ag protection?
Yes, sir. Unless the ag protection zone, uh, property owner chooses to allow it. And there have been in places in the state of Utah where the property owner has not allowed that to happen, and large water projects and stuff have had to go out and around. But here again, it's a matter of protection for ag, it's the only stick we have.
And once in, ag protection that protects the property owner from eminent domain?
It protects you from eminent domain for 15 years, as long as that, uh, ag protection zone is in place.
And after the 15 years, can they re-up?
They can reapply. And at that point, uh, it, when they take and reapply, you guys can, uh, come to the table again and say, hey, look, we would like to be able to run the road through, we would like to do your, do utilities through here because we got development on the other side or whatever. You have that opportunity in 15 years, but right now, it's essentially kind of locked up already.
If, if a parcel that's in the county annexes into the city, does that dissolve the ag protection that was created through the county?
No. To my knowledge, no.
It does not, okay. Um, one last question for you, Richard, what do you feel like is the purpose of an ag protection?
Ag protection zone is set in place so that a farmer, rancher, um, even a horticulturist can, um, practice their, their trade without interference and without fear of eminent domain. Here again, I'm one individual that my family has gone through eminent domain before, ag protection zones were not in place. And a hundred-power plant sits up on the, uh, west, west end of our old farm. So, it is, it gives a ag producer the ability to continue to make a living or to practice agriculture on his property as long as he doesn't change, drastically change his, um, his, uh, uh, what he's doing on that property. So if he's, he changes and, and decides that he's gonna take and put in, um, rental units or something on that property, he's, he's gonna change it, he's gonna end up pushing himself out. But it allows, it protects them to continue to operate.
Quick question to go with that, rental units are an extreme, are there any other things within, like, that we would be like, oh, we don't love that, or no one has a say except them? Who oversees all of that? I know that's a loaded question.
I'm trying to think of a good, um, example, um.
They would be allowed to do anything that's, um, that's.
Loudly allowed zone.
Yeah.
And along the production agriculture, they're, they're allowed to continue to do. If he wants to change from chicken farming to milk, mink farming, if he wants to change from, um, beef cattle to a dairy.
They can do that.
They can do that, as long as, as long as, uh, they don't, I would say, I'll give you an example. They put in a commercial creamery on there. Now they're kind, they're take, probably taking it a little bit step too far. Maybe you might have an objection at that point. But still, again, as long as it's still production agriculture, maybe not.
Unless our ordinance specifically says something, otherwise.
Here again, I, I would advise you to try to leave your ordinance as clean as possible.
Okay.
Because the more exceptions you put into it, you water it down to where it's useless.
Okay.
Richard Delight, I've got one more question. When you, when you look at an application, apparently, it seems like there are multiple applications, this isn't just, well, I guess it's a single application with subsets, or?
A single application, but I, taking into, uh, consideration the fact that there's other ag protection zones already around it.
Okay, so with each individual parcel that was submitted as part of the overall application, I'm looking at the web, the county website under your duties as, as an APA advisory board. One of them is to, to evaluate the nature of agricultural production within the proposed area. Proposed area, are you looking then at all of the parcels combined, or are you looking at each parcel individually?
I would say both. And we did have advice from, uh, the county in the process of, uh, considering the properties that were, um, proposed, and so we followed, uh, advice of council.
You've sat on that board for some time, Richard?
A little over a year.
Who, who else sits on that board with you?
Um, Rex Larson, Ryan Creer, um, um, trying to remember, uh.
I'm sorry, maybe you found it on the county's website, but yeah, sorry about that, asked you on the spot. But, uh, in a nutshell, it's made up of people appointed to that ag board that know a thing or two about agriculture.
That is correct.
And practice it and live in Utah County.
Yeah.
Okay, appointed by the Utah County Commission?
Appointed, uh, yes, and, and through the Department of Ag.
Okay, so the State Department of Ag.
The State Department of Ag has a, has a play in it due to the fact that, uh, some of, uh, the, uh, people on that board come from the, uh, um, conservation districts. Because the conservation districts have a responsibility for the land, air, and water within the state of Utah. And that was the other thing that we considered, the fact that, uh, some of this area bordered on wetlands, and some of this stuff was gonna come, if, if you're going to develop through wetlands, as a supervisor for the, uh, conservation district, I have a responsibility to make sure you do it right.
And that's your professional role, or you're speaking, that's your, that's your position on the ag board?
That's my, that's another hat, just take and put on another hat, sir.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. Other, uh, question, um, geez, what was it about? Let me think here. Geez, it's left me, sorry, I'll get to it, somebody else will ask you, ask you a question.
So, Richard, one of the concerns that, that we have, I think, well, I have, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of them, I apologize, is that when, when we create an ag protection zone or area, the, it's limited eminent domain rights, right, from the county, from the, from the city council, it's not, no. The ag board has a say in that, right? The ag board has a say in whether or not we can condemn a piece of property for a road or utility.
I would say that's probably more state and, and state code than it is us.
It is, it is in the state code, right? It says it takes you and us or the legislative body to do it. I think what, some of the fear we have is that, that you, you come before us today and you're, you're pretty adamant you would never grant a legislative body eminent domain right to condemn a piece of property that was for a road or a utility.
I, I am adamant about that, and also due to the fact that in the state of Utah, large private corporations acting on the benefit of the public have the ability to use, um, eminent domain in the state of Utah, which, in my estimation, I think is wrong.
Sure, I, I, I'm not sure that I would argue.
But that's a, that's a personal issue.
And you know, for, for, for me, I'm looking at, like, the road there, and, and I, I think this is probably a moot point because one, utility corridor has been agreed to, and I appreciate Gary working through that with, with.
Kudos to him, yes.
Right, he, he stepped up and said, I wanna work, I wanna be a good member of the community and, and move that forward while this was ongoing. And because the other ag protection zone doesn't have the roads, and it, it's probably, again, a moot point that this one does or doesn't. But I think that's what concerns at least me, is that there is this non-elected body that has that sort of overriding say in the matter, and it, and so I think as we move through these, we need to be very cautious about when we do it because there could be a time when, when we really need a road or a utility through there, and so it's concerning, I'm not saying, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you did pretty well, you didn't pound the podium, but you came pretty close about pounding the podium, about you wouldn't ever do it. And I think if, if a city or a county or someone was to make a, a good argument in favor of it, I would hope there would be a, at least a listening body that would come to the table and have a conversation around it.
Yeah.
I mean, if it was a private development, I could see that.
I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say no completely. I mean, I've worked with the county before when they widened the road in front of my house.
More than likely, it wouldn't come to eminent domain because we, one, as a body, haven't chosen to.
Should be the last.
It always would be the last thing, and I think part of the, my concern when you put corridors on there, it feels like we're headed that direction even before we had the conversation, right? We're protecting that, our right to condemn by removing them out of the APA.
Um, and, and I can see your point, but here again, my, my look at it was that you already have the other ag protection zone in there, and, uh, you're not gonna develop in the next 15 years through it. So, unless it's approved by the, the property owner, so. It seems like to me it's, it's a, an argument that should be tabled for the next 15 years.
And it, more than likely, only comes to fruition if the Larsons choose to develop their land in a different way.
Yeah, and if they choose, it comes out of ag protection zone and all, you know, you can do whatever you want at that point.
It's not our land, we can't do whatever we want, but that, that's the other part that I was getting to is, is the question I was forgetting is just clarification, when you say eminent domain, up here, that's something we've never done as long as I've been here and probably for.
Good for you.
Councils and councils before that, so just for clarification with people watching, you're, when, when you're talking about the eminent domain that's unfortunately happened to your family in somewhere, it's somewhere in the state, but it's not here, it's not in proximity, it's not.
That's correct.
In Spanish Fork, right? And so I guess, I guess that's where I start to come to, come to the middle of what these solutions could look like, uh, as far as neighboring property owners, and this isn't gonna be a question to you, this is just more of a statement from me, is that there are properties inside Spanish Fork right now that are operated in an agriculture way, active farming with ditches going and being irrigated, and they are next to schools, and they are next to churches, and they are next to our most modern-built buildings in this city. So, what I wanna stay away from in our city is that, like, there's, there's some non-cooperation between landowners, property owners, the city, and farmers, because I haven't seen it. I drive past two working farms every day, taking two kids to school. I drive past two working farms every day, taking two kids to school, and they love seeing the horses and they love seeing the sheep. And every time that we have an instance where it's, hey, the kids are having to fall into a fence or they're, they're having to get sticker weeds in their tires because the sidewalk's the only way, it's all, all that it's been is a discussion between the farmer and the city. Hey, can we pave, can we pave this, this area, this park strip so kids stop falling into your fence? And it's.
It's a carrot and a stick.
Sure.
You know, you come to the, the farmer generally with the right carrot and, and a willingness to work, I would say 99% of us would work with you.
Sure, sure.
And, and you see that in the, in the annexation that you, you already looked at tonight where the, the property owner is working with a developer and wanted their property annexed.
Right.
In order to be developed.
So that's where, that's where it starts to come to me about what Shane was talking a little bit about alluding to is this body has worked with those property owners without having to go to a different body and saying, hey, can, can, can we do this? Can, are you going to okay this? And, and so that history, I just want to make sure is on the record that that's being done all over our city all the time without something being in ag, ag protection, without roads being in ag protection, without corridors being in ag protection. It's.
Understood. But this is, it's just like Spanish Fork would protect their property, this is the only way for the farmer to protect his. So if the farmer wanted your new fit center, you would tell him no. So if the farmer wanted to continue to farm, but you want that ground in order to develop so that you can put in a mall, you can take and put in a new police station, fire station, well then it's a matter of carrot and stick and say, hey, look, I realize that you're in ag protection zone, would you be willing to come out for the right price? But don't take away their right to protect their property.
So there's, I guess, what we get to because I think the protection's starting to, to make more sense to me. We've mentioned eminent domain, other people have mentioned lawsuits, claims, but what you just mentioned is money.
Generally, money talks. It always has.
Yeah. So, so, so money's part of the ag protection discussion is, is whether it's from a government agency, whether it's from the private person next to them, for me to come out of ag protection, pay me some more money. And that's where it starts to, that's where it starts to, for me, starts to feel like your land, certainly, and the delivery of your utilities and the delivery of your water and the ability for you to continue to do what you're going to do as long as you want to do it, yes. But when it starts to get into the, in the public roadway, that's, that's where I think me personally.
Let me give you one example, real quick. When Utah Power and Light took our farm, we had 280 acres in Emory County. It bought 10 acres in Utah County. We couldn't farm without going back into debt and buying additional ground. Eminent domain isn't always fair. And this is one of the reasons why the state legislature has stepped up and gave farmers an ag, this tool to protect their ground. Because when it comes down to money, had they offered us enough money or a replacement in, in acreage, we probably would have still been in Emory County. So there's your, your example. It's a matter of fairness.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your perspective.
Vaughn, I have a question for you. So one of the questions that the, the Harris family has brought up is with their property abutting to this, right, and, and potential of what they want to do with their land. The ag protection doesn't give them any more rights to do something different on their land, on where we're talking about, than what our zoning code allows, correct?
Yes, the zoning still applies, yeah.
So zoning is what dictates what can and cannot be done on that land regardless of the ag protection or not?
Right. But if it's a broad definition of agriculture, like anywhere from mink farms to apple orchards, you know, you, we can't, you know, say no to that unless you decide to redefine more, in a more finely grained manner what agriculture is.
Okay. But that's irrelevant of an APA.
Right, yeah, that's a zoning question.
Zoning question regardless. And then just again, so I'm clear, Tyler, I don't see Jack over there, so if, can I have you click on some buttons for me? So that, the property right there, that is the, I mean, the Larson family's property and then north of that is the Harris's. Okay. So that property that abuts the Harris's, what is that zoned? I just want to. The Larson's there.
The Larson's or the Harris's?
The Larson's.
Larson's is R130.
R130.
Just that one.
Okay. So they wouldn't be able to, like, some of, some of the things that have been brought up, right, or, or that were in some of the letters and different things, or we've talked about mink farms, they wouldn't be able to do that in R130, right? From what I understand, at least from what I assume in the code, there's pretty, it's pretty.
You can have 18 mink, two per acre.
Yeah, whatever the, whatever the math would say, yeah. They, they have limited animal rights based on the, the code.
Going to make a lot of money with 18 mink.
I don't, I don't, I mean, Gary's right back there. Gary, are you going to put mink on that? No.
He's not listening to you.
I mean, it's, he, if we have a problem with what the use could be, it's a Title 15 conversation.
Correct.
We should dive into Title 15 and say, we don't want mink in our city if that's the case, right?
For sure.
It's not an APA problem.
Right. I think that just because they're, like the Harris's bring up some, you know, they, they're trying to protect their rights as well, I think that it's important that we have that conversation as well.
I think they brought up some, some things that would, we should have a broader conversation on, are there Title 15 changes we need to make?
For sure. I, I definitely think that that has opened my eyes to maybe some Title 15 things that we can look to staff to looking at, right, making sure that we have these buttoned up because in order to protect both sides of the fence, it's important that we do have those buttoned up. As broad or as specific as we need to be, I think is a, maybe a debatable question. But I do think that that is one of the things that the Harris's in an indirect way is, they're asking is to make sure that our zoning is in a way that does protect their rights just as well as, as the Larson's and whoever is farming, making sure that we, we have protections on both sides of the fence. I think that's an important part of this process. The second part, I think Shane, you already touched on it, is, I don't know, it's interesting that the unelected board would have that, I don't want to say power, it's not the right word, but it is, to just stop in the process. But like you said, and like, or like Mayor Menon Hall mentioned, we haven't used eminent domain, it's not something that we use and so I don't know that it's an issue. It's just, I hate tying the hands of a future council because this isn't going to be a today thing, it's not going to be a tomorrow thing, it's going to be in a maybe 15 years, maybe 20 years thing, right, where, where those roads are going to get widened or whatever may happen. Anyway, those are just some thoughts I'm having.
It's.
On what?
Sure, yeah, come. It isn't that you can't do it, it's very restrictive. Because you can still do it, you just have to jump through more hoops. And like the mayor said, you're not going to do it because it's political suicide.
And nobody wants to do it.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's better ways to handle it.
For sure.
But it doesn't limit you on that process. It just, it, you just have to go through the advisory board, you have to go through the Department of Ag, Commissioner of Agriculture and a few more things if you choose to go down that road. But I don't see you as a council really doing that.
Right.
And then just another thing, it's 20 years that ag protection is in for 20 years.
Gotcha.
So that's, that's the time period and then they're up for renewal. You can either renew, you can renew with changes or you can deny.
So 20 years, not 15?
Yeah, it's 20 years, not 15.
That's also, that's also in our code.
He was thinking about Rex's, Rex's has already been in for a few years.
He's already looking at that renewal process. And I think that, you know, for clarity purposes, and I think we've all said it, we're not looking to, eminent domain is not the thing that we're looking to do, but it's just, I think it's a tool that is there for a reason and it's important to make sure that we're not tying people's hands duly.
Yeah, and where I start to talk about that is removing it from a, a discussion. If there's, you know, there's, there could be other places in the city because we created an ordinance for ag protection that signaled to the world that yes, our heritage and history is one of protecting ag. No one can question that in Spanish Fork City. But, but to remove some of the area as, as far as roadways seems to maybe take questions out of that, not just this area, but areas that you, you could have it before. And again, the, the county can make decisions as far as the land that's still in the county of if they include roads or exclude roads, that's completely their decision. There's, there's important vehicles of autonomy between the governments that do coordinate and collaborate well together, for sure. Any other questions?
No questions, but I do have some thoughts before.
Yeah, yeah. Before we get to thoughts, I guess my, my question to the two parties that are kind of on the other side of the fence figuratively and literally with, with these properties, have you guys got together in, in a room yet, had discussions with each other of, of the changes and, and the non-changes?
No, I think we should do that.
That hasn't happened yet?
No.
Okay.
We didn't have time once again.
Okay. Okay, okay. So some of the parties have, have discussed, but not the party that, that is here for the Harris's? Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Someone just.
Sorry, given. Okay.
Come up here, yeah, come up here.
That's all right.
Harris again, I'm Janice Harris. And when I'm just sitting there talking with my husband, we were just saying, we wish we could have just had this discussion in our living rooms together, but, but I feel like I can see, I'm trying to learn more here too, but we just wanted to make sure that there wasn't going to be any hiccups. And what our need for our family is the family trust land that's right next to it and some sisters really need the money. So we're looking at having to develop. And so we just wanted to make sure that we were facing a situation where they don't want us to develop, you know, and I, we don't blame them, we don't want to develop actually either. We love the beauty of the, watching the things grow and, but that's life. Sometimes you have to change.
Yeah.
So, did I say okay, dear? Okay, I didn't say anything wrong. And we love our neighbors and we just want to, we just want to make sure that we've discussed it. And I'm sorry we didn't get it done before we got here.
I, I don't mean to discourage you from.
Discussing.
Yeah, here, this is, this is the great place to have discussions like this.
Okay.
Because this is the body that needs to review this and, and, and come up with a decision. So we love having this discussion in front of the public, in front of the open. When we do more private discussions, it ends up coming to a meeting and saying, he said, she said, and then it's, well, who said what? So it's perfect to have this discussion here.
Oh, okay.
The question was more of, of, of just of, of the bodies had the chance to, to kind of have that discussion yet.
But we are very pro agriculture.
We know that. And we know you're pro loving your neighbors too. We get that.
Fair we do. We could call this the city's living room.
Yeah, there you go.
Can, can we flip back to the three protections that APAs offer? Tyler, can you go back in the presentation? Yeah, please. So listen to Janice talk right there. I, I think, I think it was a good question to ask, have you talked to the Larson's? And I, and I appreciate the dialogue that potentially happens in the future. I don't see how an APA limits you at all. I don't see how it limits you from developing any way you want to. What it does do is it allows three protections and if you scroll back a little bit, I think Dave walked us through those three protections. One, a protection of nuisance lawsuits. So if you develop and the folks that move in there hate living next to a farm, they can't sue the Larson's for continuing to do what they want to do, which I think is a extremely good protection.
Correct.
The second one is eminent domain and we've had way too much conversation about eminent domain on a topic that we have never even used. So I don't know, that's a protection and I get it and I understand why, but I don't know that it's going to apply in this particular case. And the third one is you get noticed, right? Is that it? That's the, you get noticed that.
300 feet within the.
You get extra notice?
Yeah.
So there's, there's really just one protection that we're really talking about and that's the protection of nuance, nuance or.
Nuisance.
Nuisance, thank you. Which I don't think any of those protections stop you from doing what you do. I know you disagree. And I think that the mink farm was a special case that was there for many, many, many years and people moved next to them. And they had protections. And they had a, they had a right to continue farming and those folks that moved in better have known they'd move next to a mink farm. That's sort of the protection that we're trying to, to help the farmer with. So, I mean, I, I don't think you're going to be affected, honestly. And so I, I appreciate the dialogue and I, and I think that you've pointed out some things within our code that we need to go and address on the, on the, on the code side and on the APA side. So I appreciate you coming because, I mean, I, we've read this and I appreciate the, the email, we read it, Jess and I have talked a little bit about, we want to open up our code and make some changes to it that can help overcome some of these challenges, but it's not an APA problem.
Well, one thing I'm curious about with the mink farm, was the mink farm within Lehigh City and was, was subject to the zones of the city or were they?
It was probably county way before it was Lehigh City would be my guess.
When the APA did it was.
Oh, you, you did it, I'm not, you, if you want answers, you say yes.
You can, you can answer that question.
I'm curi, because you are, you were in Lehigh at the time, was the mink farm within the city or?
It was. So just to give a little bit of background about the mink farm, again, trying to be neutral in, in all of this. So the mink farm, you're absolutely correct, it had been minking for 40 years. I defended the mink farm, I was, this was a time before my council. They had the right to do what they wanted to do on their land. And the problem, the problem that came about is when development came in and they had the right to develop, the, the farmers went to the city and said, you, your development is not following protocol and it's causing problems for our mink. And the city unfortunately turned a blind eye to the farmers, which is terribly unfortunate for them. So the farmers, the Johnsons, went to the county to get the ag protection overlay put into, to effect. And the city, they realized that they probably didn't make the best decision in ignoring the Johnsons, which I, I, again, I supported the Johnsons here. They granted that overlay and as, as such, their idea was, well, we want to protect the culture and the community of Lehigh City and, and protect our agriculture. When they granted it, that's when the Johnsons weaponized it. And, and what I mean is, is this, when you're saying with, with development, does it hinder it? In the code of 14, or 1741 403 for nuances for the, the state with the APA, it says in a civil action or nuance or a criminal action of public nuisances under this section is a complete defense if the action involves agriculture activities. So what happened was is any development that was around it had to come to a, to a stop because the dust that was being caused had an effect on the mink. And the, the farmers retaliated against the developers. It was, it was a very nasty fight between both parties is what happened. And so the city could only, the developers could only develop at a certain time during a certain hour of the day because of the dust and the noise that interfered with the mink. Now granted, yes, the city was not working with the Johnsons, that was, that was a slap in their face for sure. But the APA in the city's defense shouldn't have been put into place because at least the city could have come in as above our zone and said, hey, you guys need to make sure that you are agriculturally doing what you need to do according to the zone and the developers have their right to do what they need to do in their zone. And so that's where the, the conflict and the concern comes in is because of that, that nuance that there. So take that with a grain of salt and then, yeah.
Thank you, Katie. The, the discussion, I want to get back up here between, between this elected body and staff is some clarification, number one, on, Katie, you did bring up some timing of, of the application that is maybe a little bit different than, than what Dave Mann presented to us. Some clarification there would be nice so if we're getting close to making an informed decision up here, that, that we can know what that timeline it looks like. David?
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I think Mr. Mann was spot on, that might share something a little bit different. I believe taking, I'm going to call it the most gracious way of looking at the date that the application was filed, would say it was filed on, and Vaughn, maybe you can help verify that we're looking at it the right way, on the 4th of November. So the council. I believe taking, I'm going to call it the most gracious way of looking at the date that the application was filed, would say it was filed on, and Vaughn, maybe you can help verify that we're looking at it the right way. On the fourth of November. So the council has a hundred and twenty days to act from that date, which puts it into the first week in March.
Regardless of when it was applied to, to the county advisory board?
Correct.
Okay.
There is a certain amount of time that the city has to deliver the application to the county advisory board, and we were very responsive in getting it moving right from the beginning. So I think it's most appropriate to use November four as the start date.
I would agree with you, Dave, that the actual application form is dated November fourth and notarized on that date. So it couldn't have been before that. There were the other forms that were dated October sixteenth, but they were incomplete, it wasn't a complete application.
That's, I think, a very important matter, so that if you need time, you want to ask more questions, or you want to take a little bit more time, there isn't that pressing shot clock of this meeting and only this meeting. If you need more time, you do have some more time.
I guess since the applicant's here, I'd ask the applicant in good faith, is that the timeline that the applicant agrees with in a public meeting? That if you went to the county advisory board with something that wasn't applied to the city yet, what timeline are you going off of, is the applicant?
And my payment, so I applied November fourth on that Monday. The planning office then sent me the fee schedule at that, because you can't pay online, then they send it to you. So I paid my three hundred and eighty dollars and sixty cents on November sixth. So the application was submitted, and it was dated on November fourth, it wasn't October. My sister actually passed away that day, so it was that day.
Sorry to hear that.
Sorry, Dan.
And there were some things still missing, which is why Dave says, you know, you graciously, we, it could be a da-, a date in December, but I think we've all kind of moved forward from that November, November four date, which gives us until March seven.
I think it's fair to say, like, this is a new process. There are some varying issues, not issues, but like inconsistencies with the timeline. But I don't really want to get hung up on that, that much, I, I understand that's a new process. There are some other things I wanted to maybe point out, that's okay right now, though. I'm never going to be a mink farm, I can assure you, mink people are different. We've been sued by a mink farm, so we're not going there. It's not an overlay. And Gary's house in Hisfield is legal non-conforming, so he's not going to change anything what he's done. Oh, one of the, the Eaton's. The other ag protection area, there is one that's already right next to their property as well, for the Harrises. So they would have it on both sides, right now they have it on one.
Okay. Thanks.
Appreciate that, just counsel for your, for, for the definitive process there, that, that the timeline, you know, is not, I mean, this, this is a new thing, that when, it's not every day in, in the world we live in that something's applied for, and then there's a shot clock that it's approved if you don't act in this period of time. So, so you, that's the timeline we're dealing with. Thank you for that clarification, Dave. Other questions up here for?
So I think, I think it might be helpful, as you guys, as you've been talking about the zone, and, and I think it's helpful to go back to the two parcels. Hopefully you have a map on that slideshow, you don't have to keep going back and forth, oh, that's great. Yeah, so as you look at the R one thirty, the, the table, if you want to jump in your code, to fifteen, three, twenty-four, ninety, that's the section of code that gives some clarity to what can be done, and specifically subsection G. For the residential zones, and that's a, that's one where the resident, residential zone becomes affected by this section of, of the code, that's where it lists the animals. And I think specifically, it is pretty specific, I should say. Cattle, horses, sheep, goats, llamas, ostriches, rabbits, pigeons, ducks, geese, game birds, with appropriate permits. It doesn't say mink. So I think to your point, you know, if you don't want to have meat farm, I think you already don't have meat farms.
Right.
And so I think that's, I think that's a concern that, that in essence you can take off the table. Because in that R one thirty zone, mink aren't allowed. And, and in the, the number of animals are specific to a formula that's based on acreage. And so there's going to be some calculator, right, that says, are this many acres? Two cows per half acre, or whatever, right, and that gets you to the number of, of animals. So I think that tells us what the R one thirty zone can have.
Right.
And, and there's no reason for us to spend any time speculating beyond that, unless you're going to change the zone at a future date, like you're talking, you know, to add or take away. And I think that can settle some of the fears associated with what can happen. And I don't know if that's something that, that, you know, the, the adjacent landowners knew about. Now, in the RR zone, the property that's across the, the street and, and the larger parcel, parcel that's, that's some twenty-five or thirty acres, that is our RR zone, which has, does not apply to this. And, and, and so their, their allowances are much greater, and in fact, maybe you'd say it the other way, they're not restricted. And so in, on those parcels, you would have greater allowances than what is, what is identified here.
Can we go? There's a map that looks like this.
That's the county map. He can, if he, go, go to the city one and then zoom in just on that corner.
So that works?
It is right there.
Man.
Bless our souls.
I want to be super clear, because I feel a motion spinning around in my head. So I'm not worried about the shot clock, because I'm going to make a motion. And you all can, as usual, tell me no.
Before you make a motion.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to yet.
He's just saying he's ready to make one.
I'm getting close.
Okay.
The piece of property that would not qualify to be APA, according to our Spanish Forks policy, is not in green belt, is the little square that is Bodie's and Sidney's property. That is it. And the city properties, the two city properties, two city properties and that point six-six acres. Is that correct? Okay, okay, that's all the clarification I want, go ahead.
Tyler, could you go to the page showing?
Actually, I should clarify that, that the proposal needs to contain a minimum of twenty acres that are greenbelt. You can include other area that's not greenbelt, as long as you have your minimum.
Of just twenty acres.
Okay, so we can leave it in?
Yeah, I think you can leave it in.
Okay, thank you.
Tyler, could you go to the evaluation criteria page?
I have to come out of the APA.
Right there.
So Vaughn, in the code at the very bottom, it says, no single criterion is necessary or sufficient for the establishment of an APA. Explain exactly what that means.
Meaning that you don't have to find one of those six, like, it's not required that you prove all of them? So that's not, not any one is sufficient on its own, and not any one is necessary on its own? Does that make sense?
It does.
You just consider all of them in totality?
What's the point? I'm trying to understand the purpose of an evaluation criteria if none of them are necessary.
Not, not one single one is necessary.
Not one single one?
But you have to evaluate all six. I don't, I don't know if the Ag Protection Board did that, if they considered our ordinance, they should have.
Yeah, and, and when you set a code, when you set ordinance, the findings that you talk about, the findings that determine why you, why you did what you did. I'm going to make a motion that we approve this based on the finding that this is agriculture, that it's, those kinds of things. That's what, those findings are going to come from these kind of criteria, right? They're going to guide you to, how should I measure this? How should I, how should I evaluate this? So you give yourself that guide.
So if it's all right with the council, since this is part of what we, as a council, are required to do, is to actually look at these criteria, I, I would like to go through them one at a time and have discussion there, and then, and then go, go from there. And so, criteria number one, whether or not the land is currently being used for agriculture production. I think it's safe to say, yes.
Yes.
It meets, it meets that one, right? Other than.
Can you, yeah, can you help us as staff, make sure we are thinking as you do? You know, in terms of the singular house that was subdivided, that two-thirds acre one?
That one, I guess that's the question, are we considering the home? Or are we considering the individual parcel?
As a legislative body, you can do whatever you want. And I think we're going to look at it from a staff's perspective, on the whole, does it fit? And then we're going to go piece by piece, does it fit? And we'll give you, we'll give you our recommendation. I think it'd be helpful for us to know what your thoughts are.
And, but to your, your recommendation is to approve the agricultural, the APA. That's staff recommendation, and that's the county's recommendation as well, right? So both of those bodies have evaluated the, the criteria as set forth and recommended the APA be approved. You have conditions, sure, but you have found, both bodies have found, and the planning commission sort of because they.
Easily.
Waived their right, have found that it meets this criteria. So you're not going to go back and forth of whether you agree with us or not.
No, and that's not what I'm asking, and, and maybe what you said is helpful for me with conditions. So as, as those conditions are discussed, I want to, I, I want to get an understanding of where, how you view those as well, because that'll be helpful for us.
So as an application as a whole, I would say, my opinion, number one, yes. As a parcel, if you look parcel by parcel, you have the one in the corner, doesn't meet this criteria.
I mean, they're using it to, to live out of, to farm the ground behind them, so, I mean, it's, it's sort of, I don't know.
So I, I would lean, if I were only basing it on number one, I would, I would lean yes, as, as a whole. Number two, whether or not the land is zoned for agriculture use.
Most of it is.
Okay, most of it is, what does that mean?
All of it is, R thirty, you can.
R thirty, you can do it in, it's just, yeah.
So yes.
Limited.
Yeah, the, and if you're talking about the home being peeled off, I mean, that's a citizen of Spanish Fork that requested to say, hey, I want to peel off and build this home here, and did a subdivision to do it. A resident of Spanish Fork.
So that he can farm behind him.
That, yeah, that he can live on the farm that he's farming, so, yeah. If, if it's not contiguous to the farming operation, I'd be like, that's hard pressed to call that. I'm going to protect you agriculture-wise, but with you living there and farming behind you, I think it's, I think it's fitting it.
Yep.
So you're comfortable saying the R one thirty zone is an agriculture zone, more than it is a residential zone? Even though it falls?
It has agricultural use.
Has agricultural use. You're, you're comfortable with it?
I am.
It's pretty, pretty, like, from a zoning standpoint, it's one of our most lenient zones in the code.
The reason this piece is R one thirty and not RR is because of the size? It's too small to fit within a rural residential zone?
A few years ago, when the applicant wanted to build a home, the rural residential zone requires that a home be on five and a quarter acres. Our rural residential zone has that requirement. And so in order to build the second home, which is the home on the two-thirds acre lot, in order to have that home built in city, in the city, or had it been in the county even, they would have had to have ten and a half acres in order to subdivide five and a quarter to the existing and five and a quarter to the new. Instead, they chose to rezone to the R one thirty, where they would only have to have a two-thirds acre lot. And so the whole property was zoned R one thirty at the time, which then allowed for the subdivision to occur for that two-thirds acre lot to be created. Does that answer your question?
Number three, whether or not the land is viable for agricultural production. I think that one's visible, just looking at the map, you can see they're currently, currently growing. So I assume if you've got stuff growing, that it's viable?
Some years. Some, some years is tough water.
Some years, yes, and any, any questions on that one?
Pray for rain, no.
Number four, the extent, nature of existing or proposed farm improvements? I don't know that there are any proposed. Vaughn, maybe you can explain, walk, walk me through what this means.
I, I'm not sure what it means. I don't know if it means like improving the farming operation they have there, or.
Ask David, he wrote it.
Dave?
That's from the code.
Point number four.
Let's say it doesn't. We got three out of four.
I mean, it has improvement, farm improvements on it, right?
Yeah, canals, ditches, you know, whatever it might be that.
The types of improvements we're talking about.
We're getting some water on there.
Five, anticipated trends in agriculture and technological conditions. I'm just going to ignore that one.
I love it.
And six, whether the land contains land planned by the city or another political subdivision or state agency for a roadway, park, utility corridor, or commercial development determined by official maps of the city, or other political subdivision or state agency. I think this is part of where the question comes in, between what was approved by the county and what's been submitted by the city, and that the city's transportation master plan shows a corridor running through that property, is that correct?
Not through the property, on the, on the roadway.
On the road itself.
On the road itself. Tyler, can you go to the map that shows the?
That one.
Right there. So the piece on the right, you've got the split between the two.
That's the utility.
Utility easement.
That they've already.
It's already in there.
It's already in there, which we've decided, the city's decided we're comfortable with throwing that back in as part of the.
That would be in my motion, yes.
Okay. Thank you. The, Mr. Harris, you can say it.
So really, we definitely want the Larson's to be able, what they want to do. But we want to make sure that within all this, none of what we're trying to do is put, you know, out to pasture. And if you're, you know, we've talked about the road being in it, not being in it. All those things concern me because we don't want to have any hiccups when it comes to moving forward. So as far as do we care if they have a ag protected area? No, as long as that does not infringe on us. And it's already obvious that, and not a big deal, but it's obvious that within three hundred feet, every one of those individuals is going to have to have, I don't, I don't know where you put that, but they can't complain, which is fine, because they're moving into an ag area. But is there anything else beyond that that affects us? Because there are some things that I've read that make me wonder if there are other things, or if it gives them, the Larson's undue power. So that's my concern, is I don't want us to protect one farmer and hurt another family.
Sure. And we don't.
We get it, and we don't either. I think you've got, I think you've got, I think you've got people acting in good faith on, on protecting their property, and, and I think you guys are too. And so trying to get this, this right is, is for us something that, that does honor the request of landowners on both sides of the fence, for sure. I guess that last, that last one that, that Kevin read is, is where I'm coming to. This is the council's legislative body, the bite at the apple. When you approve this APA, you are giving up some abilities that's been discussed here tonight. The, the county side of it that's been discussed of, well, the county, on the other side's a county protect, ag protected zone. Yes, it is, and that's, that's not our, that's not in our legislative wheelhouse. But when and if they ever want to annex into the city, that will be the part where our legislative body says, if you want to annex, yes, maybe you don't need to come out of ag protection to annex, but if you annex, these are the road widths that need to fit there. That's where that would fit there. I just don't see why would, why would handcuff, I, I think that, I think that the city's adjustment here of, of excluding the roadways is, is what makes sense to me when this is the, the bite at the apple that we get. And, and, and for me, I don't see the detriment to the, to the farming operation according to the APA's ordinance that we've put in place.
Yeah, we've, we've put a lot of time, and I know staff put a lot of time into making sure the APA was created in a way that it would not hinder the city.
And the disclaimer there is, is, is not that, that we see the, the eminent domain being eminent here either. It's, it's simply, it's simply the ability to say, these are the established roadways that have been there for a long time and, and in our master plan.
With the, with the zone change that happened a handful of years ago, there was a ninety-foot dedication right away right here. So that, that, this land in this space here has been dedicated to the city for that future roadway. There's also some land dedicated right there. And, and so if you keep that in, or, or don't at this moment, we would then have the opportunity, and staff, I think we would recommend that you, that we take it out so that it's not in there and we have the ability to do with it whatever we want. At the end of the day, it's our land, so it's our land.
Doesn't matter if it's in or out, you still have the ability.
I understand that, but I think there are questions that, for example, maybe the Harrises are saying, will we be able to do our project because we need to get utilities through there? And the answer is yes. And, and with clarity, you can provide them that by not having it in there. And, and with clarity, you can provide them that by not having it in there. I mean, they're here right now and so they're hearing.
They have the opportunity to put it in the road itself, right?
So, I don't, I don't know. You know, when, when I had the gentleman up here a few moments ago saying, no way.
If it's, if we own it, we have the right to put it in it.
And, and their state?
It does not, we keep, like, it feels like because we're putting APA on something, we automatically go to eminent domain or our rights to not do something. That is not the case. We have, we're going to have a conversation with whatever the property owner is about the right improvements at the right time and the right location. And 98% of the time, 99% of the time, we work that out way before we get to eminent domain. I don't understand why this is any different. The, I do share the mayor's concern is that there is an unelected body that can tell us, you can't take that final step. But like you just mentioned, if there's already a dedication, we own the property, we get to do with it what we want. We're the property owner, right? We get to say whether our utility goes in or not, or whether the road gets widened or not. So, I mean, it's, it's, we're, just, the risk does not seem that large in my mind at this point to keep talking about eminent domain in this, in a, in a meeting where we have not gone and pulled that trigger before. Like, it feels like we're?
Preempted.
Yeah, a little bit. And, and I get the concern and I share the concern as well. It's just, man.
I just don't get what it does.
Beating that dead horse.
But what does it do to keep it out? What does it do to keep it out? It's the same thing. It doesn't, what does it do to keep it out, except maybe not have the discussion of whether it's the public's money or whether it's, you know, somebody else's money? What does it do to, to keep it out? I don't see the disadvantage of keeping it out.
If I can just add to that, anybody, so any of the parcels that are in this, so the city does have two parcels on there, we do need to work on that, one that spans the entire road because that was only 30 feet and I can go back and show you the minutes of that. I'm willing to work with that. We can go in tomorrow, you can go in tomorrow and you can remove any parcel that you wanted to out of ag protection and it, everything else is still stay. Because how it's sitting right now, we have irrigation ditches and drains that are within that corridor that's excluded that we want to make sure that are maintained.
Sure.
We've made it clear, like, how you just saw, how we worked with Dean, we don't want to get in the way of it. We want to be part of that conversation to make sure that we can still be able to function. If it gets forced into where, no, we're going to take this out, I'll be forced to, we'll, we will go through the condemnation process because that's, we're going to have to fight that way. We don't want to. We have no intention to unless we're forced to. So we want to work together.
You condemning land?
No, we don't want you to condemn us. Sorry, I said that wrong.
We don't do that either.
Yeah, okay. Because that is, a lot of the conversation is really signaling that that's where you guys are going to.
And that's, that's not what I want to do. What I, what I don't want to do is get into a situation where it's, it's, it's just the, the money part of it, of, of, pay me more money for it. Why? Because I'm in ag protection.
Well, that, I mean, for that parcel, the road parcel, is that what?
And you guys haven't been, you guys haven't been that way, the Larson family down in this area and other areas of the town.
Time and time again, we've worked with you guys.
Well, worked with a lot of people, not just the city, but hey, yeah, pay me, fair market value for this. And it's been paid and then it's been bought and then it's been purchased. That's going to happen time and time again as generations change here. There's just no need for, from my perspective, to throw the road in the middle of it when it's going to be a road. It's going, it's going to be a road.
Which, we just want to make sure that we are treated fairly with it. The agreements were what they were made. The entire parcel should have shifted because it started as 10.3 acres and you add it all up, it ends at 10.7. So there was a half acre added to that. We did our part. I just want the city to do what's right. And I don't want it to hold it ag protection. We can still work on that, have it approved and we can work on varying that.
I don't think there's precedent for people in this area to feel worried that the city is not going to treat them fairly or, or try to keep them up to speed. I know you, you disagree on some different points there, but just in, in a very area-sensitive discussion here, that happens all over the city in different places. And again, those people are happily farming with kids walking to school and church and to the SFCN building every single day, right around their farms. It's going to happen here and it doesn't need to, it doesn't need to, I feel, just include that one more step. It's, you're going to be worked with.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I think it's been said.
Okay. You've got the language in, in the area here. If I get back to the item B, there we are. You've got a proposal. I think that's in front of us and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but that is, what's in front of you today is, is the map that does have the adjustments that city staff recommended. Is that correct, Seth? Is that what you're seeing on, what's on our page here?
Say that one more time.
Sorry, the administrative content section. What, what we've got a motion to do here is, it would need to be adjusted if it was completely the applicant's way. It's, the way it's reading here is the staff's recommendation.
Yeah, and the, the, eventually it'll need a legal description, so as you describe it, I think we'll just have to go.
Per the cleaning that stuff up.
Yeah, we'll have to go get that and that'll be part of the follow-up.
I guess, and before maybe we get to that motion, is there anything else? You guys have worked a lot on the APA from a city staff perspective. Is there anything you guys wanted to add to this more than what's been discussed here? No? Thank you. Okay. I can't make a motion, but I could entertain a motion.
Didn't sound like you wanted to take a stab at it.
Give it a shot. I'll give it a shot. You can, you can tell me no. We can, you can, you can all move a different direction.
Do we have to wait for you to finish?
Nope. Actually, yes. Don't, don't pull a Jordan.
This is where, this is where we have Vaughn in the room. He can, he can help us with the legal way of running the meeting.
Give it a go.